Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We are calling our regular meeting of the Delmar College Board of Regents to order at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, February 14th. I am going to call roll to establish our quorum. Mr. Kruehl.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Dr. Turner.
Here.
Dr. Adami.
Here.
Mr. Garza.
Here.
Mr. Loeb.
Here.
Dr. Beverly. Would like to, as we start our meeting, congratulate Dr. Ananthababaly for his appointment this morning to serve as our at-large Regent for Delmar College. We welcome you and are excited to be serving with you, and thank you so much for your willingness to take on this commitment.
Thank you.
There are a number of items on our agenda today, so Dr. Beverly has heard of this already twice today. I asked him how much water he could drink at one time because we've got a fire hose for him. So we are going to attempt to take it slow for you, but we do have a full agenda today. With that, I'm going to ask you all to join me in a moment of silence as we start our meeting. Thank you. Dr. Adami, would you lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At the beginning of every meeting, we read together our Delmar College Vision Statement. Please join us. "Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities." Thank you. "Delmar College is streaming live audio and video from our official Board of Regents meeting on the college's website in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute." At this time, we have an opportunity for public comment if there's anyone who would like to comment on anything that is not on the agenda today, general public comment. Seeing none, we will move on and we will start our program today with a couple of recognitions. I'm going to ask Ms. Lenora Keys to come forward and help us recognize our first student, or graduate in this case.
Yes, thank you very much, Regents. And at this point, I'd like to ask Dean Dan Coras, Dean of Corporate Services and Workforce Development, to come forward, and Lynette Cervantes, the Director of our Transportation Services Program, and our graduate, our student, Ashley Leva. Ashley? It's my honor and privilege to share with you the recognition today for Ashley. The Transition Trucking Initiative began in 2016 as, and as part of the United States Chamber of Commerce, Foundations Hiring Our Heroes Program in collaboration with Kenworth and Fastport to address the driver shortage and create immediate jobs for the nation's transitioning military personnel, including veterans, National Guard members, and reservists in the trucking industry. And a year-long search for America's top military rookie driver culminated with voting that ended in November the 11th, Veterans Day, among the top 11 individuals selected from thousands of nominees, with Ashley Leva, our Delmar College graduate, included among those finalists. The great news in our honor is that our Delmar College Trucking graduate, Ashley Leva, Ashley, was named a 2022 National Transition Trucking Driver for Excellence Award winner in Washington, DC on Friday, December 16th. Ashley was, as a United States Army veteran, and one of 11 individuals who were the finalists, and she's the only female, so even proud of her doing that. As the recipient, Ashley not only received the Transition Trucking Driver for Excellence Award, but also a $155,000 Kenworth 10-680, many of you may know what that is, next-gen truck. I bet. Fully equipped for comfort and safety is a head start for her entropeneural career. Criteria for the final selection included each candidate's successful transition from military into civilian life as a truck driver, and their focus on safety in the profession. But additionally, Leva, who now owns her own business with her brother, from your mother's business, correct?
Yeah.
And her trucking business, and she's received a full scholarship that will cover the cost of pursuing a degree. She plans to continue her entropeneural endeavor by earning a bachelor's degree in business management. So again, help me to congratulate Ashley. She's an excellent recognition for our fabulous truck driving program.
Ashley, would you like to say something?
I would, yes, thank you. So I just want to thank Delmar College Transportation Services. Without you guys, I would not be here. It's such an honor to be even nominated and then to actually have the privilege to even be awarded this prestigious award. It's just amazing. I did spend 16 years in the military, but never in my, in my career or mine, I would think that I would be awarded something like this. So thank you so much, Delmar College, for having such a great program. And November 2021 is when I graduated. I talked about it so much, and then I got called saying that I was maybe, I thought it was a Delmar College award, and then, then I won a truck. So I was just, I'm still flabbergasted. It's just amazing, and I'm just so, I'm just so humbled and blessed. Thank you so much.
Ashley, Ashley, on behalf of the board, our just most sincere congratulations. You are the poster child, not the poster child, the poster adult, for these programs and for why we do what we do around this table, is to help individuals like you achieve success. And your story is heartwarming, and it is inspirational, and we wish you all the best, and we know that you're going to come back and continue to be a part of the Delmar family in some way, shape, or form. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And congrats to an outstanding program. Way to go, guys. Way to go. And next, Dr. John DeHalkum to present Faculty and Staff Award.
Dale and Amy, you want to come forward, please? On October 20th, 2022, a team of Delmar College faculty and staff, led by Dr. Dale Anderson, organized a Freedom of Speech event to highlight the importance of the First Amendment. The all-day event was an opportunity for students, faculty, and staff, and community members to learn about the role of the First Amendment in the classroom, on campus, and beyond. The event was highlighted by our own Mr. Augie Rivera, Jr., Delmar College's General Counsel. In his address, Mr. Rivera grounded the discussion for the day by providing an understanding of the First Amendment on college campuses, by covering seminal court cases such as Tinker versus Des Moines and Healy versus James, as well as many other examples in current events and research on students' opinions on free speech. The editor-in-chief of the Foghorn News, Delmar College's student publication, if you're not aware of that, Anna Aldridge, hosted a roundtable discussion with the local journalists, Anna Temez and Tom Whitehurst, and our professor of Journalism, Robert Mylenberg. The Free Speech Day event also included a panel discussion with faculty, Jim Klein, Craig Breschers, Paul Gottemoller of Delmar. We're joined by SMU Senior Research Fellow, Dr. Michael Phillips, to discuss a wide range of topics, from the importance of academic freedom to First Amendment protections and the faculty role in shared governance. I would like to acknowledge the planning team for the event. The planning team included Scott Beckett, Adrian Clark, Rachel Geneshi, Amy Jones, Jim Klein, Teresa Klein, Shara Mohadam, Robert Mylenberg, Augie Rivera, and Dale Anderson. So because of the success of the Free Speech Day, they do plan to have the event in another year. So I'd like to thank our leaders on this important event. Dale?
Thank you so much for taking time out of your busy agenda to recognize this work that I personally find very important. I have a list of thank yous, if you don't mind. I would first like to thank the board for this recognition and taking time out of your agenda, also the planning team, as Dr. Halkum outlined, Scott Beckett, Adrian Clark, Rachel Geneshi, Amy Jones, Jim Klein, Teresa Klein, Shara Makhadeem, Robert Mylenberg, and Augie Rivera. This was not just a staff and faculty event, but it also involved a number of students, including Anna Aldridge, David Carroll, Andrew Clement, Navis Ojohardo, Samantha Silva, Samantha Sparks, Eva Stongardner, and Allison Vella. And I really do want to thank the school for supporting this effort. There is nothing more important to me than the First Amendment, and that's because that is the centerpiece of this experiment of shared governance that we are engaging in today. So I appreciate your all-service to the community of Corpus Christi, your service to Delmar College, and your support of us bringing in the next generation of leaders and expressing the importance of what we're engaged in right now. So thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Congratulations on a great first-year event, and glad to hear that it's going to be continuing. We appreciate your hard work. Thank you. We have an actual action item that I want to move up while we still have folks in the audience, and it kind of falls within the area of recognition. So, Dr. Halkum, I'm going to put you on notice that we are going to move to regular agenda item number four. We have the privilege today of recognizing one of our outstanding professors, Dr. Elizabeth Flores, and I'm going to ask Dr. Halkum to provide that recognition, and then we have action on a recommendation from our faculty.
Thank you. Elizabeth, could you come forward, please? I am pleased today to present Elizabeth Flores to you for consideration of emeritus status. Emeritus status, as you know, is a distinction that is reserved for those faculty who have shown distinguished service, significant contributions to higher education, meritorious teaching, and special honors. This is a very special event. Ms. Flores's family is here with her today. I wanted to point it out, she met her husband here 50 years ago at Delmar College, Robert over here, and then her daughter Sarah is a graduate of Delmar College as well, and her son John, who couldn't be here today, he lives out of state, he also went to Delmar College. So we have quite a history here. And she'll tell you a little bit more when she can speak about even further history with Delmar. Your packet contains the policy concerning the eligibility for consideration of emeritus status and the process for nominations. Eligibility for the Award of Emeritus Status includes distinction in the areas of faculty fundamental responsibilities, including professional practice, educational growth, institutional and community service. Your packet lists the areas of distinguished service. Within the body of the resolution that I will read shortly, there will be a list of examples of exemplary service. A person upon receiving emeritus status will gain privileges such as being listed in the college catalog, college directory, mailing lists, just to name a few. Our faculty emeritus consideration today was recommended by the dean, faculty council, and myself, following the outlined policy and procedures. The packet also contains specific criteria and distinction in professional, educational, and institutional community service. I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution in recognition of Elizabeth Flores, which highlights her achievements, then I will ask the Board of Regents to accept the resolution and confer emeritus status. Whereas Ms. Elizabeth Flores, Professor of Political Science, served as an exemplary full-time educator among her peers at Delmar College for 43 years. During her tenure at the college, Ms. Flores provided excellent leadership as a Chair of the Department of Political Science from 1983 to 1985, as the interim Chair of the Center for Ethnic Studies and Cultural Development from 1985 to 1986, as the Program Coordinator of Mexican-American Studies from 2012 to 2018, and as the interim coordinator in Fall 2020. Professor Flores began her exceptional career at Delmar College as an adjunct instructor of political science in 1976, thus culminating 46 years of service and commitment to the institution. Whereas Ms. Flores demonstrated standards of excellence in teaching as evident by the recognitions bestowed upon her from the local community and the college by honoring her as the recipient of the League of United Latin American Citizens, LULAC Council Number One Educator of the Year Award in 2014, and as the recipient of the Eileen Creighton Award for Teaching Excellence in 2013. Whereas Ms. Flores was invaluable in serving as the Mexican-American Studies Program Coordinator and as the main advisor for Mexican-American Studies Program majors, Ms. Flores was instrumental in the creation of the Mexican-American Studies Center and the principal planner for many of the Mexican-American Studies Seminar series. In serving the college, Ms. Flores contributed to and chaired multiple program review committees in the political science program. Ms. Flores served as a member of the Cultural Programs Committee, Search Committees for Provost and Vice President of Instruction, and at least two presidential searches. Ms. Flores has shaped Delmar College by serving on Rebranding Advisory Group and the Mike Anzaldua Commemoration Task Force, charged with recommending quotes that would be displayed throughout the plaza and the general academic and music building. Whereas Ms. Flores was a contributing author to Texas politics textbooks, a commentator and moderator on panels at the Texas State Historical Association, the South Texas Civil Rights Movement Symposium, the Southwestern Political Sciences Association, the Texas A&amp;M University Kingsville Transcultural Program. In 2008, she conducted a presentation at the annual meeting of the Texas State Historical Association in Corpus Christi. Ms. Flores was a beloved colleague and mentor in the Social Sciences Department and at the college. So now, therefore, be it resolved that the Delmar College's Board of Regents formally acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation of service to our college and community by recognizing Ms. Elizabeth Flores with the title Professor Emeritus on this day of February 14th, 2023. So I now ask for you to accept this resolution and confer emeritus status for Elizabeth Flores.
Thank you very much, Dr. Halkum. What a wonderful honor it is. Dr. Adami, would you like to make a nomination?
Yes, I'd move that we nominate Professor Flores for emeritus.
And pass the resolution as presented.
And pass the resolution as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kruehl. Give the opportunity, before you get to speak, Ms. Flores, the board gets to add our atta boys to the information that's been provided. Thank you for your leadership. The privilege of being able to sit on this board when this honor is bestowed upon you is not lost on me, as a young woman who was connected to you 30 years ago at the beginning of my career. So, congratulations. Others would like to comment.
I don't often get emotional. I didn't know that was coming, but anyway. Any other comments from our board members?
I didn't know you could get that emotional. You've taught here longer than I've been alive. I guess that's the best way to put it.
All those in favor of adopting, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. There is a motion on the floor. Is there a public comment on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bestowing the position of Professor Emeritus on Elizabeth Flores and adopting the resolution therein, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Dr. Flores? Keep on with the promoter.
I am deeply touched and honored by the very kind and very, very generous words from Dr. Halkum and my colleagues, and the action that this board has taken today. I have a few things I'd like to share with you, a few thoughts. Forgive me if I can't get through them, because I do feel about as emotional as I've ever been to be standing in front of you and to be honored for doing something I just love doing, and I mean that with all my heart. In 1953, my father earned the Associate in Arts degree at Delmar College. At that time, Mom and Dad had an eight-year-old son and a child on the way. There was no degree more important in my family than the degree Dad earned at Delmar, because it set us on a path. It represented the idea that whatever we set our sights on, whether it was higher education or other professional pursuits, we should know it will be hard, but we should have the confidence to reach high, and know that the support of family was with us. As a faculty member, I attended many graduations in 40-plus years at Delmar, and each time I looked out at the audience and saw the faces of students, their families, and supporters, it was always very meaningful to me. I am deeply grateful to my husband, Robert, our daughter Sarah, and our son John and daughter-in-law Jen for their love and support. Our Delmar roots run deep, as we all attended Delmar, and Sarah is a proud graduate of Delmar, as was her grandfather. To the colleagues who mentored me early on, I will always be very grateful. It seems like just yesterday I was a new faculty member and introduced to Mike Anzaldua, who welcomed me and urged me to get involved at Delmar and to make my views known. That certainly put a spring in my step. Like so many at Delmar, knowing Mike made a profound difference in my life. And to those who mentored me throughout my career at Delmar, because the need for mentoring never stops, I was always blown away by their knowledge and generosity. I'm sure I was still asking questions until the day I turned in my keys. We could ask Dr. Bealvedado about that. I want to thank Dr. Halkum, who I worked closely with when I served as MAS Coordinator, for all she did as Dean of Arts and Sciences to steer MAS into the successful program that it is today. Dr. Halkum has an unwavering belief in Mexican-American Studies and its benefits for students and the community, which is a source of inspiration. Dr. Cynthia Bridges, who now serves as Dean of Arts and Sciences, enthusiastically continues this tradition. Thank you, Dr. Halkum and Dr. Bridges. I want to commend Erica Bertetlo, who also served as MAS Program Coordinator for her excellent work, and Professor Javier Morin, who serves in that position today, as MAS continues into its second decade. The MAS Center is increasingly becoming an important and popular destination on campus, and that is due in no small part to Professor Morin's tireless dedication and welcoming spirit. To the faculty who launched MAS courses and who teach MAS courses today, your work is important and of historic significance. You teach courses that are part of a very public degree that values community history and will serve students well, whatever career they pursue. What strengths and talents you bring to MAS and Delmar College. To Dr. Bealvedado and the faculty in the Social Sciences Department, my home away from home, I have marveled at and learned so much from your expertise and your deep commitment to student learning. To me, it was like observing an ongoing masterclass. To staff and administrators, some of whom I see in this room today, who were so generous with their time, please know how much I appreciated your "how can I help" attitude, and the many times I brought a proposal to you and you responded with suggestions that strengthened the proposal and made it a whole lot better. In the course of my career, I spent a great deal of time teaching about local public service, and I have a special fondness and respect for those who serve in local government positions. My admiration certainly extends to the Regents who have served on this board during my time at Delmar, and I am convinced that for those of you who have served on the board and serve now during these very difficult times, there's going to be a very special place in Delmar history for you. To begin my career with Dr. Gene Richardson as Delmar president to nobody ventures when he served in that position, and to end my career with Dr. Mark Eskamia at the helm as he moves the college forward in ways that will matter significantly in many decades, for many decades to come, far beyond my lifetime, I have learned a great deal about effective leadership. To the community, especially those who have attended the MAS Summer Seminar and other MAS events, we have seen you engaged at these events, expanding our knowledge through your participation, questions, and the experiences you share with us. We all leave these events a lot wiser as a result. And finally, to students, please know that your unwavering commitment to learning is appreciated and admired. Never, ever underestimate what you bring to the learning process, the knowledge and relevant experiences you share with your classes, your questions that bring insights to not only your fellow students but to your teachers. That was certainly the case for me, and I thank my students for that. Thank you for this honor and for permitting me to share my appreciation and my thoughts with you today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Although I wish we could end on those positive notes and that inspiration, we do have more of our agenda to go through today, but I just wanted to make sure that we got a chance to do that upfront and when it's important. Thank you, and thank you all for being here today, to the Flores family. Thank you. We'll now move on to our Regent Reports. There were a few of us that got to attend the Community College Day at the Capitol on January 26th. Regent Libby Avery attended that along with Mary McQueen and Dr. Eskamia, and several of our students. Let's see, all told, how many students did we have? Approximately 30 students went up to Delmar College with us. We had the opportunity to be a part of the rally that was held on the south steps of the Capitol, and then to have an in-person meeting with Senator Lamantilla, whose district covers part of our service area. So we wanted to acknowledge the work that was done and to thank our Student Services Group for their work in bringing our students to the Capitol. Group for their work in bringing our students to the Capitol. I think it was an important day for all of us, and we really appreciate the opportunity to be there. Dr. Turner and I also got to attend the ACCT National Legislative Summit in Washington, DC last week, and so wanted to provide an opportunity for Dr. Turner, and then I'll wrap up with some comments about the NLS.
Sure, thank you. It was a very informative experience. It was nice to meet with other Regents across America that are advocating for change, advocating for Pell Grants, short terms, and additional needs that our students have. It was an opportunity to open up those doorways and communicate face-to-face with our legislatures. And I was really excited to really meet people across America because they're facing the same challenges that we are, and I believe in working together that we can accomplish some of our goals as a group.
Thank you. As a college, we adopted the legislative agenda that you all saw at our meeting in January, so that was the basis of our conversations. And we were fortunate to meet with both Senators John Cornyn and Ted Cruz, as well as our Congressman Michael Cloud, and had good discussions with all three of them. Senator Cruz met with us almost immediately prior to the State of the Union address. We met with him at 5:00, and he stayed with us a good half hour or more in both presentation, and we heard comments from him, as well as some informal conversation and lots of pictures after that. So we had a great visit with the two senators and, again, our congressional representative. I wanted to report to the board that as per your encouragement during our strategic planning session last year, I put my name in nomination for the Western Region Director for the ACC Board of Directors, and I have received the nominating committee's endorsement for that, which means I will be on the ballot in October to serve a three-year term as the Western Region Director for our National Association. So I wanted to report that to you and look forward to that opportunity to serve if elected.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions about NLS or our day at the Capitol in Austin? If not, we'll move on to our staff reports. And our first one is to welcome Dr. Natalie Villarreal to talk about the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board's strategic plan. Dr. Villarreal.
Good afternoon, Dr. Eskamia, Board of Regents. My name is Natalie Villarreal, and I am under the Office of the Executive VP and COO, Ms. Lenora Keys, as Executive Director of Strategic and Operational Initiatives. Today, I'd like to report on the State of Texas Strategic Plan: Building a Talent-Strong Your last update on the state's strategic plan was in March of 2022. My goal today is to give you a brief background on the state's education strategy, describe the elements of the newly adopted strategy, and then discuss how the college is going to incorporate the state's plan into the next five years of the college's strategic plan. Under Governor John Connally, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board was created by the Texas State Legislature in 1965. The goal was to represent the highest authority in the state of Texas regarding all matters of public higher education. Today, led by Commissioner Dr. Harrison Keller, the Coordinating Board, as we like to call it for short, is comprised of nine members appointed by the governor. It's six staggered terms, and then there is one non-voting student representative that serves a one-year term. These graphics show the last 30 years of the state's strategic plan. So if you go back to the year 2000, it was closing the gaps. This was the state's 15-year higher education plan. It was designed to close the achievement gaps among groups across the state, as well as between Texas and other states, which was the priority at the time. The four major areas in 2000 focused on participation, success, excellence, and research. In 2015, 60 by 30 Texas was adopted, which many of you are familiar with. Now, this had a little bit more data to it, was a little more transparent in what the state wanted to do. It committed to have 60% of all Texans aged 25 to 34 to earn a certificate or degree by the year of 2030. Pretty bold. The plan also said to have an overall of 550,000 students completing degrees or certificates every year by the year 2030. So under 60 by 30 Texas, each student would graduate with identifiable marketable skills and having debt that amounted to less than 60% of first-year wages. The state was making progress towards the goals, but after a few years, the world began to shift. So to begin with, the Texas economy began accelerating, then COVID-19 pandemic hit, brought disruptions to the workforce while changing expectations for the future and the way higher education was moving. And then we had the United States Census numbers that came out and saw that Texas was changing rapidly. In response to that, state officials led by Commissioner Keller determined that 60 by 30 Texas would be refreshed and that Texas would accelerate its national leadership and renewed focus on completing degrees, but this time with purpose and with value. So in February of 2022, Building a Talent-Strong Texas was adopted and replaced 60 by 30. And really, what this was is not a completely different plan, but the 60 by 30 refined. Instead, this time, the focus was equity, data disaggregated by race, gender, income. It also included more coordinated efforts, input from key stakeholders from across public and private sectors, with input and support from our educators, our institutional leaders, policymakers, employers, and our industry partners. And I believe, Dr. Eskamia, you served on one of those focus groups with Dr. Keller as they were getting input from our stakeholders. So you have in your packet a one-sheet, summary sheet, describing the three major goals. The group of the next few slides are to give you an overview of that summary sheet. The three goals for Building a Talent-Strong Texas is attainment, credentials of value, So under the new plan, there's some added targets. For example, as we talked about with 60 by 30, the focus was really the 25- to 34-year-old age group and getting them into the workforce. What Talent-Strong Texas does is it actually increases that age to also include our 35- to 64-year-olds, who are also a strong piece and component of the workforce in Texas. Now, this target exemplifies really the heavy lifting that our community colleges have been doing for a long time. So you're going to start to see and hear the strategic plan of the state really intertwined to what's happening at the community college level, which really is a testament to our higher education leaders, Dr. Eskamia, Regents. When you go and advocate in Austin, they've been listening. So by including the 35- to 60-year-olds, the goal was to really better serve all adults in the state of Texas and to offer more flexible, short-term programs aligned with current and emerging jobs. This goal underscores the importance of the state really shifting the focus to think more broadly of who we serve and how we continue to increase and keep up with the economy of the state of Texas. The second piece is a little more detailed, and then it's talking about post-secondary credentials of value. Again, similar, same target as 60 by 30, in that you have at least, they'd like to see 550,000 students a year completing a post-secondary credential. However, this time, they added credentials of value each year. And then it also includes 90% of our graduates with no undergraduate student debt or manageable levels of debt in relation to their potential earnings. So again, here we have another goal in the state's strategic plan that really aligns with our community colleges. We are known for our lower tuition and fees as compared to other higher education institutions. So this is part of the mission of the college, of our business model, and we continue to provide top-quality education at an affordable price. The majority of our students leave with no debt or manageable levels of debt in relations to their potential earning. The last main target for Talent-Strong Texas falls under research, development, and innovation. Excuse me. A main focus of higher education is research and innovation through our roles as incubators, maker spaces, software development labs, and strategic partnerships. So this goal is really intended to increase those efforts and expand the state's private and federally-sponsored research across all of our institutions. The Coordinating Board did have a webinar yesterday. We're not exactly sure how community colleges are going to fit into this goal, and we're hoping to get some more clarity with that as we move forward. And also, they're wanting to increase the number of research doctoral degrees in the state. So in summary, the objectives of Talent-Strong Texas really align and support the mission and the structure of our community colleges. You see the focus on a wider range of age groups, the focus on credentials of values, the focus on low-to-managable debt, and the focus on all certificates and associate degrees. So as we move forward with our current strategic plan, and as we start planning for the next plan, we will begin to incorporate the state plan into the strategy. Because most of this work is already being done at Delmar College, it's now exciting to know that we're going to have the support of the state of Texas to really take us to the next level.
Does anybody have any questions on that or comments?
Okay, if not, then I'll move forward to talk about the incorporation of the Delmar College Strategic Plan. So hard to believe, we are currently looking at 2024 to 2029. The framework of the Delmar College Strategic Plan is going to use the SCUP framework. This is the Society for College and University Planning Framework. You might be familiar with it. We used it in the current plan. This really is an integrated planning framework. It has a sustainable approach that helps us to build relationships, align the organization, and really emphasize our preparedness as a college as we move forward into the future, knowing that changes are coming. I believe you received a timeline in the fall of what the next strategic planning timeline was going to look like. This is just an update to that. This shows the activities planned and how your briefings are going to work along the way. So your board workshop in the fall of '22 kicked off the discussion of the new plan, and the planning team officially began meeting soon after that. And starting in January, we kicked off again after break, and we are currently in Phase Two in the launch, environmental scan, and analysis piece that will take us through August of 2023. You, as a board, will be preparing through a visionary planning workshop and a discussion on external trends. In the summer, you will receive information on the 88th Legislative Session and how those bills are going to affect us for the next few years. So after that, I will come back to you in the fall to present the data as we wrap up our internal and our external stakeholder meetings. So after the final data analysis in the fall, we will begin drafting the initial plan. The board will have the opportunity to review the draft in the spring of 2024 in one of your workshops. And from that feedback, we will continue to revise the plan and be ready to present to you for final board approval somewhere between the summer and fall of 2024. As this continues, we will continue to give you your yearly updates and data on the current strategic plan. Staff is currently working on the Year Three Report. I believe many of you went to Austin in December and heard that the Coordinating Board is a little bit behind in terms of data. So our IR department is just now getting our 2021, 2022 data, and so we should have that here at the end of this month so that we can finish that report because our current plan is still very strong and we're still moving forward with it. So at the end of our 18-month period, you will have the opportunity to close out the 2019-2024 plan and begin the launch of 2024-29.
I have a question or comment regarding the schedule. Dr. Eskamia and Regent Averitt have been working on the kind of planning process, and so just wanted to have a brief discussion, Dr. Eskamia, about the connectedness between what you and Regent Averitt are working on and this timeline.
Absolutely. No, absolutely. And so as we're working, what Regent Averitt and I are working on is working to bring consultants in for various parts of the board's activities to prepare, to prepare the foundation, if you will, for the planning process. And one of those key components, of which we're seeking an external consultant to come in and help with, is the board visioning process. And so we're pretty sure we've got somebody selected. We do need to do a little bit more vetting. We do have a date set, held for that opportunity with our consultant, so that the board will have an opportunity to meet and take a deep dive into a visioning process to prepare that master vision. Because, and I just, here's a little lesson for everybody, but what a Board of Regents, a Board of Trustees does is as a publicly-elected lay board, they bring the collective aspects of, as a collective group, they bring the aspects of the community to the college. Okay? And as such, then they combine their experiences and so forth with both externally and internally and create a vision for the college. Upon that, we will take that foundation and use that to come together as a board and a college to articulate a plan, a strategic plan, and build upon that vision so that administration can then articulate the strategic plan into its operations. Lot of technical jargon there, kind of sounds like a little bit of a graduate course, but that's how it works. And so as such, we are preparing to, Regent Averitt and I are moving quickly to bring this expertise to the table and set aside some time so we can take that deep dive together.
Our goal is to avoid feeling like we've got a separate kind of governance or action plan for the board that is somehow separate and apart from the strategic plan, to really make sure that those activities dovetail and there's a cohesiveness and, as I said, connectedness about those. So just wanted to express that out in the open once again, that these things are connected. So, thanks.
Just all the while, operationally, things will be taking place internally. So there's kind of a, kind of some internal, the board gets to do its work, there's some preparation going on internally at the college, and then we all come together and put together a five-year plan. And it'll take the better part of, well, in preparation for fall of '24 is when the launch is, '24 to '29. And that's tomorrow. Those things happen quickly.
Thank you. Sorry for that interruption, Dr. Villarreal.
Thank you, Chairwoman Scott. No, we have your board workshop currently set for here in the spring with a visionary planning session. Then also, you will receive information on what's happening externally in our region, in the state, so that that can better prepare you for well as you continue to process that. So thank you. We're really looking forward to that information. So in closing, these are some of the considerations that the strategic planning team and committee will be looking at. I've got on a team with myself and Dr. Sidney Zombi and Dr. Lucy James, who will be leading the committee for the college. And we're really excited about these efforts. These are the considerations we will be looking at. As we mentioned, the state's strategic plan, Talent-Strong Texas, but also we're looking to your workshop and what comes out of your work as our board and our community representatives. But we will also be doing groups, workshops, surveys internally with our faculty, our students, our staff, but also our external stakeholders, our military partners, our education, K-12, higher ed, healthcare, our petrochemical, electric, you name it, we will be including them in all of our stakeholder groups. Mr. Divetta is also leading with Ms. Sanders, the DEI Committee. DEI was a big part of Talent-Strong Texas as well because of the change in demographics in the state, so we'll be looking to that committee as well, along with what happens with the legislative session. And then continuing on, the COVID recovery, teaching has changed, learning has changed, and we're really wanting to look at all of those influences. and we're really wanting to look at all of those influences as we look at the next five years for Delmar College. Does anybody have any questions?
Are you going to reach out to parents at all, especially with our dual credit programs, or is that just going to be part of K through 12?
You know, I hadn't thought about that, and that's a really good thing to consider. We will definitely consider that. That is a very important voice. Being a parent, I can understand that. Thank you, Dr. Turner.
Yeah, Mr. Garcia.
As it is, it's hard to understand. Question, obviously, with with these goals that the state's putting out, and of course, they're going to be putting some money behind their their reasoning for wanting to achieve those goals, right?
That's the hope, yes, sir.
Or they're going to achieve those goals. I'm wondering if maybe it's a little premature, but at some point, there should be some maps or there should be some numbers attributed to specific regions or specific institutions in order to achieve those goals. If they're talking about 550,000 students graduating or getting some value to a certificate or degree, there should be some number that we should
Yes, sir, yes.
determine what Delmar's number should be so that we can
I'm trying to think if it was 2018 or 2019, but the coordinating board did divide us up into regions. And actually, Delmar College, we hosted the Southern Region convening for all of the universities and colleges here. And we did come up, under those main goals that they put out, we came up with our own separate goals as a region, and we did work on those and reported those to the coordinating board. You know, then during COVID, things got really quiet because we weren't meeting in person. And then really, there was a challenge to find another institution who was willing to kind of continue that. So we kept meeting and providing data and turning that into the coordinating board. I'd be curious to see if they divide us up into regions again or what their what their next plans are, but we'll be listening intently.
It'd just be great if we had some sort of a, even if it's a loose number, when we go into our workshop, so that we can maybe come up with strategies
Yes.
that might be able to help us help the overall state number in there.
Okay. Yes, sir, thank you. We did just receive some data from the coordinating board yesterday. Lenore and I met with Sushil, and so we've got some really great numbers that just got released. Again, they're a little bit behind, and so we're hoping to be able to get those to you soon, once they're confirmed and verified, and we can present those to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Are we going to see the surveys before they go out in terms of what we're asking, or have they already started?
We don't normally do that. We're currently working on the surveys. Where we're at right now is we did, we did put out a survey to our committee members. We've invited about 20 to 25 people from across the college to serve on the committee, and we actually did put out a survey, and I can tell you some of the things we asked them was, had they, how long they'd been at the college, had they worked on the plan before. We have so many new employees. We asked what resources they needed to serve as as a committee member. You know, did they need data, just like you were talking about, Regent Gadaza? What kind of data did they look at? What do we need externally? So we did put that survey out just yesterday and are getting that feedback, and we'll start on the other surveys here soon.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, is that the survey we're going to do, but are we, I assume we're going to do some student surveys and some potential student surveys and things like that?
Yes. Part of the groups will be in person, but then we will also provide surveys that people can take, that they can finish quickly and get us the proper feedback that we need, but that they're actually willing to complete.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for this update. Really timely and helpful for us to understand what's coming down the pike and and how it's going to coordinate with what we're doing.
Thank you, and it's a pleasure to be in front of you again.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Next, we will hear from Mary McQueen with a regular legislative update. This is going to be part of our monthly agenda until the end of the session, and it's just a a quick opportunity to find out what's going on.
Just a reminder, we're about a month into the 88th legislative session. Our primary focus is supporting the the Texas Commission on Community College Finance, which has three main goals, and that is moving to outcome-based, or a big portion of our funding, moving to outcome-based funding, which supports, again, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board report that you just saw, which is credentials of value, and then a component of that supporting student access, and another component supporting building capacity. We now have the Senate and House Committee Assignments, which gives us a very robust list of individuals to go talk to about the various initiatives that we need to share with our legislative committees. House Bill One and and Senate Bill One, the appropriations bill, have been submitted. Both have the $650 million that is requested from the Texas Commission on Community College Finance for additional funding for community colleges for those three various initiatives. There is no bill yet from on the Texas Commission on Community College Finance. We wait with bated breath as we have for a month, but we will continue. We have another month before filing deadline. We are currently tracking 306 bills of those. We've put them into different levels. Level one is high impact, high probability. We have 39 in that area that we are tracking. Level two is high impact but less probability, 53 in that particular area. Level three is low impact but high probability, 106 we're tracking in that area. And level four is low impact, less probability. That's 108 bills for a total of 306 bills currently being tracked through the Texas Association of Community Colleges, which is our primary support. Traditionally, over the past five years, we've seen anywhere from 6,200 to 7,300 bills filed. These are just the bills out of the House and out of the Senate. They're not the the resolution bills. Of those, 1,000 to 1,400 passed, so you get an idea of what we'll be looking at over the next three months. That's a very quick oversight, overlook. Any questions?
Great. Thank you very much.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Kroll?
Are those, is there some summary somewhere where we can look at those bills that you're tracking? Does somebody have?
I have them, and they get, we get an updated list of those every week. It's about 64 pages. You can get it, absolutely, I can send it to you.
We can get those out to the regents
We can absolutely get that out.
For your late reading.
Well, and one of the things you may want to look at first is the level one.
Yeah, yeah.
The level one are probably the best, and I can send that out to Ms. Delia, who can send it out to you all, and you can take a look at it. Luckily, it does have an active link, so you can actually click on the link and go see a little bit more of the details of the bills. And depending on what you're interested in, I can also let you know which bills we are specifically taking a deeper dive at. And that changes from week to week, depending on
Yeah.
what we're looking at.
Where it is in the process to
Correct. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did, you talked about committee assignments were just made, and so all three of our House members are chair, are committee chairs, and then Senator Hinojosa is, once again, vice chair of Senate Finance. So while none of them are directly related to higher education, certainly Senator Hinojosa's work is very connected to higher education from appropriation standpoint, and just having three chairs from our our three main members, Representatives Hunter, Herrero, and Lozano are very helpful to have have that kind of leadership at the House level as well. So we're keeping in touch with them on a regular basis. Okay. All right. Thank you. Moving on to our president's report, Dr. Eskimia.
Very quickly, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to let everyone know that I have a, Ms. McDonald, if you can come to the podium, I have a racial profiling report that that is necessary to be brought before you all. It comes from the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, otherwise known as TECO. It comes through Ms. Tammy's McDonald's office, but I asked her to bring it through the president's report this time so that we can make this a regular part of the reporting process and then, again, have the president's office attached to this submission to you all. But that being said, Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Dr. Eskimia.
Sure.
As part of the requirement under TECO, the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, law enforcement agencies are required to file a racial profiling report once a year. If the law enforcement agency makes traffic stops as a routine part of their duties, then you're required to file the report. Delmar College does not make traffic stops as a routine part of our duties, so we do still file the report, but we file it certified in exempt status. And part of TECO's requirement is that we do notify our governing body that the report has been submitted to TECO with an exempt status. And it's just a one-page report, and it's in your package, and it shows that it was filed as exempt, and our interim police chief, Lauren White, did file that.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. The other piece of my report is just reporting to you all that on January 25th, I did attend the quarterly meeting of the Texas Association of Community Colleges. What's different about this time around is we have a new CEO, Mr. Ray Martinez. He has come on board this fall. We're glad to have him. He's no stranger to higher education. He's a good South Texan from Alice, Texas, I might add. He's leading, he is leading the association through this legislative session. He's very adept in at this type of work, and again, no stranger to it. Finally, the other thing is, what changed, one of his changes that he made is that with the association, that we will now be having monthly meetings throughout the legislative session. So I will be back in Lakeway next week for our next monthly meeting. Again, the things that you might imagine with the legislative session and the work of the commission being in front of us was largely on the agenda, the importance of the 50 colleges remaining closely aligned and linked arm in arm as we move ahead through this most historic work that has been done by the commission that yours truly and our chair of our board are members of. Thank you, Madam Chair. That is all I have. And I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Eskimia? Thank you. So I'll use the pending business as an opportunity to let our new board members know how we kind of do some of our board calendaring. We actually have a separate calendaring item at the very end of our agenda where we talk about what's coming up in terms of meetings. But in in terms of board calendaring, we have a master calendar that Delia and Mark and the executive committee look at in agenda prep on a monthly basis and look at what major items that happen every cycle when those occur. We also have what's in front of you on the pending business list, those reports or those things that are not subject to our regular cycle, but that we have asked the board, we have asked staff to come back with to us on, or have asked staff to provide regular updates on a variety of things. So at this February meeting, you'll see we have several of the items that are on our regular pending list that we're going to be covering today. In March, we're going to have a discussion on tax collections, so we can see how we've done so far in our tax collections as we start our budgeting discussions. We will also, I don't know if this workshop on the external and internal influences is still going to happen, but we're going to ask Dr. Villarreal to, along with the work that that Dr. Eskimia and Regent Abrit are doing, to calendar those workshops that'll happen at our upcoming meetings as well. We'll have a discussion on strategic enrollment management as well. We'll do our enrollment update for the spring semester in April, potentially May, depending on when reports are ready, and we'll do kind of, I think, our final HERF update in May. So just see that we, this pending list rotates throughout the the year with upcoming items. Again, either the board has asked for follow-up on or, but just to give you a sense of what's coming down the pike. Any questions on any of the items on our pending list? Great. We will move on to our consent agenda. Items one, two, and three on our consent agenda have been provided to the board in advance. Is there any item that needs to be pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopts, adopt items one, two, and three as part of our consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kroll, second by Dr. Adami. Any discussion on that motion? Is there any public comment on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the adoption of items one, two, and three as part of our consent agenda, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number five, we will now have a discussion on our college's quarterly investment report, and Mr. Garcia will open that discussion.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board. Today, we have Mr. David McElwain from Patterson and Associates, a meter investment management company, to discuss the college's investment yields, investment performance, and investment strategies in pursuit of higher yields.
Thank you all for having me today. I see some new faces here on the board. So again, I'm David McElwain with Patterson, and we are now a larger part of Meter Investments acquired us last summer. But, you know, the Federal Reserve has continued to fight inflation, which peaked this summer. We saw the CPI peak out at 9.1%. CPI got reported this morning. Expectations were for 6.2%. The actual came in at 6.4%. So the markets are spooked. Treasury yields are a little higher in reaction to that. But that 6.4% was just a fractional drop from the prior month in December of a 0.1%. If we go to the core CPI figure, which strips out food and energy prices, that figure came in, again, a tenth of a percent higher. The consensus expectations was 5.5% there, and it came in at 5.6%. I think a large part of that's probably, you know, some of the things we're seeing in the grocery stores, like egg prices are out of control. Apparently, you know, the bird flu has now killed 57 million chickens since it started, and that surpasses the peak that we saw in 2015. We lost 50 million egg-producing birds back then. So the average, national average price for a dozen eggs in December was $4.25, and that was up from $1.80 the previous December. So that's, again, everybody's paying through the nose on that. Luckily, we're paying less at the pump. We're back down to, you know, pre-Ukraine invasion by Russia. You know, those prices are about where they were prior to the invasion. So that, you know, again, we've got this slow-moving ship. It is seven months, we're ticking down, but it's at a very slow pace. Speaking of pace, you know, the Federal Reserve rate increases have started to decelerate, which is good news. The last time we met, you know, the Fed had, when we get into, let me just touch on the next slide, which we're talking about, again, just summarizing a lot of what's going on with the with the inflationary rates and CPI. I'll tab down one more. That little chart on the bottom right is depicting, you know, that we are in the fastest rate cycle in modern history. This chart goes back for the previous five rate increase cycles that have occurred in the past 40 years. Our cycle is the one to the far left, which is almost a straight-up vertical. We have now surpassed the longest rate hike cycle from 2004. That cycle took almost two and a half years to run its course. Our cycle has taken, now, we're in the 11th month, where we just saw the Fed go a quarter point last week, which was down from 50 basis points in December. But prior to that, at our last meeting, we'd seen back-to-back 75-basis-point increases. And, you know, prior to those, we'd seen four consecutive rate increases. So it's, you know, again, it's kind of unprecedented. We went from a zero-rate environment just less than, you know, a year and a half ago to now the highest rates we've seen in almost 30 years. So you're never going to catch the Fed when they're raising rates. The good news is, everything that has matured in the portfolios were sub-1% coupons into the low to mid-1% range. Any funds that we have been reinvesting have been in the upper 4% range, around 4.80 to the low 5% range. I think we've, we possibly, you know, we've put maybe a couple of yields approaching 5.5% on the books. And that that will continue to happen as those lower-yielding things roll off, we'll be going into a higher new rate environment. I'm going to open it up to questions here in one second, but I did want to point out the yield curve remains inverted, which the bond market is fully expecting that the Fed is going to have to seesaw at some point. Their language indicates that, again, they've moderated. Their language indicates that, again, they've moderated. They're probably going to go one or two more times. But then the next, you know, the big question mark is, we're seeing some strong employment numbers, and then contrary to that, we're seeing big layoffs in the tech industry. So there's a lot of mixed picture out there. And the Treasury yield curve is completely strange. Right now, a three-year Treasury is at a 4.76, and the six-month Treasury is the highest yield you can get. That's at a 5.01. And a one-year Treasury is at a 4.95, and then it just cascades down. The two-year Treasury is at a 4.60. The three-year Treasury yield is at a 4.30. And a five-year drops to four. And a 10-year Treasury yield is at 3.76, totally contrary to what academically you would perceive we would have in a Treasury yield curve. That 10-year yield is 125 basis points lower than a six-month Treasury yield. So again, the bond market screaming that the Fed is going to have to reverse course at some point. Probably, it'll occur in the next 12 to 18 months. If everybody in the room knew that, we could place our bets accordingly and probably, you know, come out pretty well. But like I said, we've been mostly preserving, most of the investments are getting reinvested at higher rates. We are, you know, had been holding on to cash prior to tax collections. Tax collections are coming in, and we've been redeploying comfortably in that 5% range. Are there any specific questions to the portfolio? As we're going to go just take a look, again, that's that yield curve inversion. The chart doesn't really do it justice, but you can just see that, you know, a year ago, at the very bottom, that's a normal yield curve. Shorter time horizon, less rates. Right now, you're seeing the highest rates on the short end of the horizon, and they're scaling downward. Again, the portfolio itself, we're, you know, we're meeting all the policy requirements. The weighted average maturity is slightly less than one year. The weighted average yield continues to rise with each maturity and reinvestment. We're, again, putting an emphasis on short-term liquidity. Over 23% of the portfolio is in liquid cash investments, your local government investment pools. And about 30% of the portfolio is spread out, you know, shorter term, you know, one month through 12 months, with 47% of the funds being in that one-to-two-year space. So we're just, we've really been holding off going further out because there's no incentive at the moment when we feel like the Fed language is getting a little bit more closer to neutral. You know, that might be something that we'll take advantage of.
Yeah, I had a question, and I guess it was on that. You know, I understand being very liquid the last couple of years, but I think we've kind of stabilized on that front. But with rates as high as they are, is there some wisdom in having some stuff that matures longer than two years? So, I mean, because even if we would need it, we're kind of at an apex on bond prices or kind of up there. And so if interest rates go lower, which they probably will have to be at some point, we can always sell them, even if they haven't matured. So have you, you all have been looking at that?
Yeah, we will. We're taking into context the cash flow needs of the college. There's been an aggressive spend-down in construction funds.
Right.
This being one example. This is the first time I'm in this beautiful building, and this is obviously one of the fruits of the university's expansion or the college's growth. But as it relates, we are, in particular, not just trying to predict or weigh and guess, like, why shouldn't we buy a three-year Treasury? You know, where it's almost 80 basis points lower than a one-year Treasury? The emphasis right now, from a cash flow standpoint, is let's be liquid. And we will have some opportunities to deploy some further out the curve. But, you know, again, until we get to where, you know, maybe we're raising cash or tax rates are going up, we still want to place the emphasis on liquidity. And there's not going to be, you take into context the investment policy, the maximum's three years. So there's just this little window right now that we're not presently in, two to three years, and it's the lowest-yielding portion of that pie. But yeah, we will be getting into there. But your cash rates are going to keep going up. You know, the Fed just raised. The Fed's going to raise at least one or two more times. And to remain cash, you know, liquid cash or close to liquid cash is not punishing us right now, right?
Okay.
And those rates that we are talking about, two and three years, they have gone up over 20 basis points in the past two weeks in reaction to the latest Fed rate increase.
So I, I mean, and this may not be a question for you. This may be a question for Dr. Eskamia. But what is our, how much of this is bond money that we have yet to spend? How much of it is catastrophic reserve? How much of it is unrestricted reserve?
I think, we can break that down right here, just this piece of the pie. I don't know. I think the plant fund is a little more reserve-like in nature, representing 9%. But I don't want to misspeak on that. Someone here that is...
So yeah, this presentation will break down the different components of our investment portfolio by real estate. When you talk about that risk management reserve, that's held into the general fund in itself. But I also want to emphasize your question on, you know, how we invest our dollars. I think Mr. David McElwain said that liquidity is important for us just given the scale of expenditures in our capital projects. And it is a balance in trying to finance our overall day-to-day operations. But I also will emphasize that when we say liquidity, we do have dollars invested in the local mutual funds that are very highly liquid, but at the same token, are very responsive to increases in the Fed fund rate. So each time that we saw a 25-basis increase in the Fed funds rate, we saw an increase in that investment, in that local state mutual fund. Can you expand on that?
Yeah, yeah, that's that local government investment pool that he's referring to.
Okay, yeah.
That, that, you know, again, cash is not hurting us at all right now. Cash is the only thing that can keep us as close as possible to the pace of the Fed rate increases. That will come to an end. We understand that. That's what the bond, the bond market inversion is speaking loudly, that they're going to have to pivot. But the pivot is not, it's not, it's not distinguishable at the moment.
We don't need to jump on the board yet.
No, no, sir.
Okay.
But I'm glad you asked that question. It is a very relevant question. But when we look at the pie of all the funds here at the college, 55% of it's in your local maintenance, which is your general fund.
Right.
And you still had, at the end of the November quarter here, which is your Q1, you still had about 30, almost a third of the portfolio was in construction funds. And I think the anticipation is that the preponderance of that will probably get spent out over the course of the next 12 months.
Okay, I mean, that, because one of the things I was looking at was, I mean, we, and I'm still learning it, was if this is all unrestricted, I mean, we've got, we've got over a year worth of operating capital in reserves, if that's what it is. And, you know, if that's the case, with interest rates as high as they are, I mean, it may be, okay, let's, let's buy some 10- or 15-year Treasuries and basically defees our, some of our debt, where we can borrow, or we can buy bonds that are paying more interest than our debt is and just use the interest off the bond to pay off the note as it goes.
Right. But you are constrained from a duration standpoint at the moment, unless you, unless you do something to the policy on reserve funds.
Hence the conversation.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, and I would think, you know, in terms of where the college is, you know, there's probably a five-year max would probably be maybe a little more appropriate for some of those reserve-type funds with maybe a two-to-two-and-a-half-year weighted average maturity. But given the constraints of the policy, again, we're within those policy guidelines.
Okay.
And we can have a discussion about that certainly at another time, whenever y'all want.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. This is just breaking down the, like, this little slide right here is specifically on your pooled funds. It excludes all your construction funds. It just shows that at the end of the first quarter, the book value of the portfolio was a little over $95 million. The market value was a little over $93 million. The weighted average maturity of that portfolio was almost seven months. The weighted average yield was just under 2%. And obviously, again, we're still trailing the six-month Treasury yield. It's just been flying up. But the total earnings year-over-year, obviously, are favorable. A year ago, you know, we, we were earning probably, we're earning at least 150%, closer to 200% more on a year-over-year basis. Then when you look at how that allocation looks, you know, we've still got 30% in those local government investment pools. That's like your money market. We've got a sliver of commercial paper there with agency notes, which are, you know, federal agencies representing 23%, and municipal bonds is at 39% of the portfolio. But I would point out that, again, we're seeing rates increase in all the sectors there, especially the commercial paper. And the last few commercial paper investments we've done have been in excess of 5%. They're not fully reflected in this report. This is specifically the 2018 bond funds remaining. At the end of the quarter, you had just over 20, just under $23 million from a book value perspective and about $21.5 million from a market value perspective. Again, that's probably going to be spent down pretty aggressively over the remainder of the year. The 2020, the combination of those two bonds is pretty similar to the 2018. It's $21.1 million book value. Market value is just under 20. That yield on there was a misprint. It's still, the yield's about 1.48, but we couldn't get that in there in time. But on a, on a relative basis, again, the portfolio continues to benefit from higher rates each time something matures. We are either redeploying at the higher rate or we're staying at a liquid rate that continues to escalate with each Fed rate increase. So the, the portfolio composition on the bond funds is what's depicted here in this last doughnut chart. But that's it. Were there any other questions that I could shed light on for y'all?
Any other questions or comments from the board? This is an action item, so I would entertain a motion to approve the college's quarterly investment report as presented. Motion by Mr. Garza, second by Mr. Loeb. Any discussion on that motion? Is there any public comment on that motion? Not? All those in favor of approving the investment report as presented, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for being with us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Look forward to seeing y'all soon.
Mr. Garcia will do our quarterly financial report.
Yes, all right. Okay. So in general, the financial condition of the college is on solid footing based on the trending operating revenue and expenses that you see before you for the first quarter of 2022. Our total financial revenue is of $32.4 million for the quarter. It is on track relative to the planned budget, and this quarter's revenue-to-budget rate of 30% is consistent with prior year's actual-to-budget for the same period at a rate of 30%. Depending to our operating expenses, operating expenses for a total valued of $24.8 million and a spending rate of 23% relative to our budget plan is consistent with last year's spending rate for the same period of 23%. If there are no questions on the revenue expense statement, I will proceed on to the balance sheet. Very well. Okay. All right. So the college's November 2022 balance sheet is financially well-positioned to weather most business interruptions with a cash and investment position of $60.6 million. This includes the Risk Reserve Fund valued at $8.6 million. In addition, the college's liquidity levels are sufficient to pay its current obligations, valued as of November 2022 of approximately $20 million. Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board, there are no questions. This concludes my presentation.
Question.
I have a quick question about...
Yes, sir.
I'm new to, kind of new to this, but $77 million in net pension liability. That seems kind of high.
Yes, I quiver when I get pension questions on this. Very, very, the, the technical accounting component is very challenging. Yes, I agree with you. $77.5 million is rather high. However, when we look at the prior years of $83,000, it's really down $5.7 million. I suspect that this liability, declining liability, has to do in part with the scaling up of interest rates that is proving positive in the overall states' management of the pension portfolio in itself. But in terms of getting into the details, I would have to spend more time and do more research to better answer your question.
At some point, maybe you and I can sit down and talk about that a little bit.
Yes, of course. Yes, yes. Good question. Thank you. Okay, I got to polish up on my accounting pension skills. Thank you. Perfect. Any other questions?
Seeing none, we need a motion to accept the college's quarterly financial report as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Kelly, second by Mr. Kroll. Any comments or questions on that motion? Is there any public comment on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the quarterly financial report as presented, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
And finally, a discussion around our possible tuition rate change for the 23-24 fiscal year. The board had a workshop on this at the end of last year. Mr. President, you want to make some opening comments?
Sure. Especially for the newer regents. So as you will come to find, that there are three primary legs of the stool for the, for funding community colleges, and I'm just going to speak to the ones in Texas, although it is shared throughout the state. And the three legs of the stool are local taxes, state appropriations, and I'm going to say student charges, okay? Because it includes much more than just tuition. But in this case, we are talking specifically about tuition, and we'll get to that. And as such, it is a model that Delmar College is steeped in and built upon and the like. Each year, it is our responsibility as administration to come back and throughout the year to talk about the impact of, of funding that leg of the stool for the college. We understand that the student charges obviously comes from our student. And we understand, and we also feel very strongly that as, as one of the primary underpinnings of the mission of us, of our community colleges, and especially Delmar College, is affordability and keeping those numbers down. We understand the sensitivities. We understand them all too well. And, but, and we also understand that there is our fiduciary responsibility of maintaining the operations of the college and moving forth in such a way that affordability is maintained as well as a quality experience for our students. That being said, on average, I would add that Delmar College continues to maintain a, a, a very affordable rate, all things considered, a very low acquired debt, a debt rate for our students, in other words, loans and those kinds of things when they exit the college. The other thing is that we, we feel very strongly that staying at less than a third of the price of a regional university experience for the same exact classes in many cases is very, very important to maintain. And, and sometimes it's even, it's way less than, well, significantly less than a third in some cases, depending on the years. That being said, we, we, we take this very seriously. This will be my final comments until I hand it over. I will say that we feel very strongly about protecting the student experience. In many ways, we feel very, we are very sensitive to the students' needs. We understand them extremely well on many different fronts. We do not take this lightly, but it is necessary to come to the board and, and address this together so that we can move ahead. Timing-wise, regents, again, I would just remind you that the reason why we come in February is because we begin enrolling in fall next academic year. We start in April, in early to mid-April, mid-April, late April? Okay, early April. So that's, again, like I like to say, that's tomorrow. And so we, 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 we have, this is a culminating point for us, for your consideration, and we bring to you various scenarios. Mr. Garcia, would you take it from there?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, so, we continue our discussion from the December board meeting, uh, on student tuition and fees. Uh, let's begin with the college's three major revenue streams. Like many public community college in Texas, uh, Delmar College is heavily dependent on property taxes. The college ended the two thousand twenty-two fiscal year with property tax revenues valued at sixty-point-six million, or fifty-six percent of the operating revenues. Our state appropriations has a combined value of twenty-three point seven million, or twenty-six percent of our operating revenues. Uh, this includes space appropriations, insurance, and retirement funding. Our tuition and fees is a close-third valued at twenty-two point two million, or twenty percent of our operating revenues. With respect to state appropriations, there are currently two funding pathways for state community college, uh, for consideration by our ADA tax legislators. The first is a proposal that will transform the existing file, uh, funding formula for Texas Community College. The second is our normal biennial state appropriations funding. In either case, uh, we will learn more about the funding levels in the coming months, possibly at the end of our two thousand twenty-four budget planning process that happens in the July, August timeframe. Okay, student affordability indicators. So, we've covered this information on this slide at, at great length at the December board meeting, so I will point out a few takeaways. When we compare ourselves to, uh, our peer group of nine, the college develop, the, the college delivers the most affordable education with an average net price of five thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars. Our tuition and fee price point is near the mid-range of the group, valued at three thousand three hundred and eighty. On the average, our student receives the third-largest federal financial aid package, valued at five thousand nine hundred and eleven. And then I also wanna point out that, uh, seven out of our ten students attending Delmar College receive some form of financial aid. We also recognize that our students have choices. Here are two, uh, more points for our students who made a choice to attend Delmar College for their first two years of their four-year degree plan. As you can see on this slide, the cost of attendance at Delmar College is significantly less than the two nearest public universities listed on this slide. Our students are saving as much as sixty-five percent on their cost of tuition and taking advantage of our hands-on student success services that includes academic advising and our math and reading labs. So, if I was to be an instructor and I would deliver a class on finan- financial management while going to college, those students coming to Delmar would definitely get an A-plus from me, very easily. I mean, a savings of sixty-five percent down from your typical four-year regional institutions. Anyway, uh, those are my two cents there. If there are no questions, I will move on to the next slide.
I just wanted to provide context for Dr. Babaly. The reason we select these colleges as our peer group is because of the coordinating boards, um, grouping of colleges, very large, large, medium, and small. It's a really scientific way, but they do it by, by fall credit to, uh, credit, um, enrollment. And so, we are in the large cat, college category, and these are our peers in terms of size. Not necessarily all in ter- in terms of the college mission, how it's funded, who our student bodies are, the, the purpose we serve, but in terms of size, they are all similar to us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes. Okay. Alright, so, this next slide is an example of our out-of-pocket cost for a full-time student enrolled in fifteen hours in the fall and fifteen hours in the spring. So, based on the data reported by the National Center for Educational Statistics, a Delmar stu- student can, uh, could, uh, receive on an average a refund of ten thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Ten thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. It is also assumed, uh, that the student will use the financial aid refund for other costs of attendance valued at around thirteen thousand. These other costs includes the cost of books, supplies, room and board, childcare, and transportation. So, at the end of the day, our student's, on the average, net out-of-pocket cost is estimated at five thousand eight hundred dollars. I also wanna highlight, uh, the estimated room and board value at six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars on this slide. This is, there's always a possibility that a student may not have this cost because they're living with a parent, or they may have a similar living arrangements. In such circumstances, these dollars can be redirected, redirected at the discretion of the student to other educational-related expenses. As a final note, the maximum Pell Award will increase on a year-over-year basis for this coming year by five hundred dollars, or seven point three percent. Uh, this is up from the two thousand twenty-three, this is for this upcoming two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four year. The expected financial aid rate increase of seven point three percent is significantly above the three tuition rate change scenarios that I will be discussing later in this presentation. Are there any questions?
I have a comment.
Yeah.
So, you went back to, um, the last slide, it says seventy percent of our students receive aid, correct? So, that means thirty percent of the students are receiving, are having to pay cash or get loans, correct?
So, seven, well, yeah, so, seven out of ten students are receiving the financial aid. And this is not by design of Delmar College, but-
No, I understand that. So, when you go back to the slide that you were just on, and you're looking at the out-of-pocket and so forth, this is what a student who is not, doesn't, you know, doesn't receive a Pell grant, these are the costs to the, the students. And these are the loans that some of our students are having to take to cover these costs. So-
Essentially, that bottom line five thousand eight hundred is net of your Pell Award, on the average, five thousand nine eighty-seven, state grants, two thousand nine forty-nine, institutional grants, one thousand six, uh, one thousand six hundred and two. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, though, those, the thirty percent are having to get loans or, or to pay, and they're just having to incre- you know, their debts, that's their debt.
So, let, let me, let me make sure-
So, I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I didn't get a whole lot of grants when, you know, I did at the beginning, but then my parents were just above that poverty line where I ended up having to get loans to cover all my expenses.
So, so, let me, let me, let me slice that a little, a different way, maybe. Let me clarify. The seventy percent also includes loans. It's some form of financial aid-
It does not include-
It said excluded loans.
It's just those three components, yeah.
So, okay.
So, I'm just concerned about the debt of the ratio, 'cause I know you're, you're wanting to change the tuition, and I'm just concerned about those who are having to take on debt.
Yep. And there's a big cash pain. It says, our students operate in cash, and so, out of that thirty percent, um, the, again, we are one of the lowest, um, one of the schools with the lowest rate of, of debt when, when our students exit. And so, what I would say is, out of that thirty percent, that there's a relatively smaller number of students that are actually taking loans. Um, and, and there's a big part of that thirty percent-
I guess that's the information I'd like to know. How many are actually getting loans? And what is their average rate of loans? Do you have that information, just to have a com-
Yeah. Well, and then there's, again, a big cash basis, um, that, that, that our students are operating from. I mean, you, it, it's, it's, unless something has changed, uh, over the years since I've been here, uh, the amount of cash that these students come and, and just, and pay, they pay as they go. There's good and bad with that, we understand. Uh, and lots of them, a lot of them just don't want to affiliate or tie into the financial aid process altogether. Uh, Lenore, you were gonna add?
I was just gonna add one statistic that might help the discussion. This just came, this was just brought to my attention yesterday as we left. This is how quickly the data is coming out of the state, okay? And this came out of our IR office yesterday afternoon late. And I'm tying this back to the previous, uh, presentation that was done on the Texas Higher Education Corning Board Strategic Plan and the Benchmark. And under building a talent-strong Texas, the second goal was post-secondary credentials of value. And the target was ninety-five percent of students will graduate with no undergraduate student debt, or manageable levels of debt in relationship to their potential earnings. And that was determined, the state did an analysis by the type of degree they received, and were they working, and at what salary range, okay? Delmar College came in at ninety-nine percent of our students graduated with no or manageable debt.
Yeah.
So, we are already exceeding that target by the state of Texas.
Yep. I didn't have that data, and thank you so much for that. I appreciate it.
It's right off the press. Thank you.
It's brand new.
Yeah.
Yep, we, 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 and, and as a commuter college, um, you know, there are pros and cons to that, to that that we'll be talking about as we move ahead. Um, because as many of our peer colleges that are listed right here have a residential experience, they acquire quite a bit of debt for, for living expenses and so forth.
So, so, I could also appreciate, uh, your experience, uh, you know, you being a doctor. I, I think you had, you went through a four-year, uh, degree program plan, right? But Delmar also has one-year and two-year certificates. So, a one-year investment of five thousand and eight, a two-year, let's just say, twelve thousand, and you get a certificate, and you're landing a job, uh, of forty or fifty thousand, I would say that's a pretty good return on your investment. And that forty thousand, coming out of college, is probably gonna be the lowest level of income that you'll ever have in your lifetime, you know? I mean, those are the questions that I asked myself when I was going to the college. Is it really worth my, me going to college? Uh, those are the questions that I was sharing with my friends. My friend said, you know what? I'm not doing it. I'm going to construction. I'm gonna make a lot of money. I took my time, and I can tell you, my life is totally different than their life today. Because the lifetime earnings and, and your job growth does not compare what I invested back then, and in loans. And yeah, it hurted. I agree, it hurts. But the re- the payback period and the investment, return investment is pretty significant. Uh, and then the other thing Mark pointed out is, um, one of the things that I think that's, that I, I perceive as being a challenge, is that our students are, for some reason, has reservations walking into my financial aid office and asking for money. I don't understand that. And so, the good news is there's been some state legislation, uh, recently, that will force students to apply for financial aid. So, I think that seventy percent that you see right there is going to change over time as this new legislative policy gets into full effect.
Last fall was the first fall that, I prefer the word required, not forced, uh, required, all, all graduating seniors to the ninety-eight, uh, something percentile, uh, to, uh, apply for the free financial aid form. Uh, it was part of their graduation requirements. Uh, my son was one of them as well, and so, it's just, uh, yeah, that's, and I know it from different experiences. So, that's how the laws have changed.
Yes. I'm gonna have to pause here for a minute. I do apologize. I have a student who's eager to get back to class, but, um, Sofia Jimenez, she is the president of student government. As customary, as part of this process of vetting the tuition change, we sit down and we talk to student government, and then, uh, Sofia has taken this information, talked to the students, and now she's here to provide some feedback. Sorry about that.
Thank you. So, thank you for hearing me out. So, first of all, I'd like to just make a comment. So, I personally live off of social security. I pay everything out-of-pocket. Um, I will say I'm very grateful to Delmar. Uh, when I started, Delmar was homeless, um, had to work two, three jobs to come to school. It was very difficult, but I also know it's feasible. Um, if it wasn't for Delmar and its tuitions, I wouldn't have graduated, and I've graduated a few times from Delmar, so I'm very proud of that. Um, but, um, you know, one thing I know, in researching and where I can go to school and trying to make it, because I was tired of living paycheck to paycheck, um, I will say I know that universities get a lot more money than community colleges, um, just like everybody else. And we hear tuition increases, we kinda like, hey, wait a minute. But on the other hand, when I think about Delmar and all the resources that are offered to us compared to local universities, um, you know, we get free, uh, student, you know, instruction, we get a lot of tutoring, we have the math lab. They offer us a book program where if we can't get our books, that we can scan our books. There's just a lot of things. Disability office has a lot of free programs. We have career development. They help us with resumes. They have the clothes closet. They have the food pantry. And all these things, um, students would normally either, like, they didn't have this stuff back then when I was homeless. I had to go find things in the community, and I didn't have a way to get there, 'cause I didn't have a car. So, I was really out of luck with stuff. So, the fact that the college provides all these wonderful resources to students for free, it makes it that much more easier for them to get the resources they need to go continue with school. And they help with those basic needs. And I know there's a resource office that when a student is struggling with certain emergencies, there's funding, there's, uh, you know, they help with community resources. They'll call different places and give them these opportunities. So, besides all that, um, I did let, you know, speak with some of the students, and, and again, they have a lot of the same responses I do. Um, COVID hurt us all, uh, whether that be businesses, personal families, jobs, all kind of things. So, why it's hard to think about tuition increases, when you take in everything that Delmar gives us as a student, um, I've gotten a lot of feedback as far as when I have talked to students, and they're like, I don't know about that. And I explain to them, you know, like, I start showing them some of these figures, like, look what the university gets, look what we get, look what you have to pay for over there, like tutoring, parking, all this stuff, and look at all the free stuff Delmar. There is a huge difference. So, I will say that's one thing that has come off very positively when I've talked to students, and they don't realize, like, 'cause we don't normally see that. As a student, we just pay tuition and we go on. We don't see the background behind that. So, when I've had the opportunity to speak with students, when they're kind of like, I don't know about that, and I explain to them the differences, and they're like, okay, now I get it. So, I think that, um, as hard as talking about increases is gonna be, I think that if we are very transparent, which Delmar has always been, and I've always appreciated that, and let students know, like, why it is, you know, not just the inflation, but the differences between the amount of money you get compared to a university, and, and plus, all the resources that Delmar does offer us. So, I appreciate your time, and I thank you very much.
Sofia, thanks for being here today, and thanks for going to Austin with us a couple weeks ago. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Uh, one thing coming out of COVID is, we've learned to, to adjust and pivot, and, uh, we're very agile, and this is a good example of that, so thank you. Are there any other questions on this slide?
Well, I've got just a couple of comments. And my experience, my concern is also similar to Dr. Turner's. And again, I'm real grateful to Delmar for the opportunities they gave me, and it was a struggle. And it's, we talk about the ninety-nine percent, people that, students that don't come out, or don't come out of col- come out of college without debt, is that some students who either don't have the ability to borrow, or don't qualify because of whatever reporting issues they had, their parents had, and income, or they had in their own struggles to, to, to meet their obligations, don't get help. Sometimes, and this goes back to the challenges and the, the goals that we have for trying to get students to come back to school, sometimes they quit going to school because the burden of the tuition or the fees are higher than they can absorb that particular semester. So, again, one of the things that I think would be helpful, if we had a way of getting a number, we have a thirty percent, I'm gonna say percentage of, 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 uh, students that don't qualify for Pell Grants, or in some cases, financial aid or loans, I would love to see a number of those students that don't get aid, uh, how many of those, what percentage of retention we have? How many of those quit coming to school? Again, if, if I had an, an idea, it would help me make a decision between one dollar and three dollars. I know that we need to increase the amount of revenue that we get in order to make, meet our operational goals, but I also have a difficult time quantifying or qualifying the amount of increase we, we have. And I know that affordability, Delmar is by far for, the most affordable institution in, in the area. Why, why, I, I went to school, went to Delmar two years, and then took the last two years at CCSU. By the time my wife was going to college, which was just a few years ago, she took about two-thirds of our, of her classes, all that she could take at Delmar, at, at Delmar, and then took the final, uh, so to speak, a year and a third or so, at, uh, at, at Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, because the tuition-
It's a good strategy. Yes, sir.
There's such a huge difference in, in the cost of tuition. So, again, I just, it would be great if we had that number. Alright, thank you. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I understand where you, what, what you're asking for. The body of work, I, I think needs to be given a lot more thought, not too sure what the volume of effort to, to put this together, but yes, definitely for me to have some discussion with, with Mark to see what, what is a good pathway of, of getting that information for you.
I, I agree. Listening to our student government leader, I agree that you have to have, again, those, those critical services in order to be able to get a large percentage of the population all the way through, whether they get financial aid or not. But I also think that, that you've got to figure out whether if we're, if we make a decision that's going to help us achieve some of our goals, but take us away from some of the other goals that we, we want to achieve in terms of retention and completion, then what, you know, what's the best decision? Thank you.
Good, thank you.
I've got some questions.
Yes.
All right, I was gonna, I've read through the whole presentation, I was gonna wait, but since we're into it now.
Yes.
I don't, I, I take for granted the value of the degrees that we offer. I know we provide quality education at a far lower cost than any of the other local institutions. Those are a given, then you've quantified that, so we can see to what degree we're doing, how good of a job we're doing at that. But I also take as a given, anytime we increase tuition, we are increasing the impediments to some of our students completing an education. And so I'm looking at this from an entirely different perspective. What I want to see is why do we need these tuition increases? If we know that the impediment, that we're creating an impediment for some of our students, maybe an impediment that would have stopped some of the people sitting here today from achieving their goals, my perspective is, why do we need it? And I didn't see that in the presentation.
Sure. So you will have that when we talk about salaries and I have a very good example for you, so I ask for your patience.
Okay, and that brings me to another point.
Yes.
I mean, I see in the salary presentation, we had, what, over a million dollars of inflation relief for our employees. Our students are under the same inflation burden. In fact, their costs, their household costs, we're just keeping a roof over their heads or feeding themselves, probably representing a significantly larger percentage of their income than our employees.
Yes.
And by increasing the tuition, we're increasing the burden on the least affluent people in our universe.
I'm not too sure about that statement. So let's bifurcate, bifurcate the student population. So 70%, seven out of my 10 students are receiving financial aid. That means in this presentation, they're gonna, they're gonna get, on the average, another $500 in financial aid refund in their pocket.
Okay, so I look at, let's assume that that's so. Their out-of-pocket expense right now is $5,800, so you're gonna drop that to $5,300.
Yes.
Right? That's on top of feeding their kids or gas in the car.
Right. So your assumption is that...
So let me, let me just jump in there because we're gonna have to get through this, but, but the, the, the term impediment is, is, I, I don't, having done this for a long time is, I don't know if that's the right word. I know it's your word, but I, I, I see it as, when we talk about the full wraparound services, when we talk about all the experience, the full services that the students get and that they, that what those dollars support, when those dollars are used to support the, the support services, the, the tutoring labs, the technology, when you think about what the college has done to give students support in the way of, of, of technology, technological support, counseling, mental health counseling, disability services counseling, not to mention student government leadership, all, all of those wraparound services is where those dollars go. And to provide a foundation, a foundation of, I like to call it the fluffier nest, it's a nest really and/or a foundation that, that gives students better support for their quality experience at the college. It's not just a take from the students. Those dollars go right back into the institutions and, and when you have the quality and when you, when, when you've, and I know you have, Regent Kelly, through, through personal connections, when those students have come through and experienced the type of, of, of support that they get here, it's because of those dollars that we're able to afford that. Having been through lean, lean times when the state clawed back quarter percent, excuse me, a quarter of state appropriations and when there were no support services, we saw a tremendous decline in, in, in the overall student experience. So I've seen both extremes, so I just, I just have to, just to have to add, it's an investment in their experience here at, at the college and, and we see it every day, so I just, just have to add that. But if we can move quickly to get that demonstrable data to support this.
Very good, sir.
We'll get there.
And then my question is, can we provide those services with the tuition we're receiving now? Why do we need the extra $2 or $3, whatever it's gonna be?
So with the financial, as, as the financial report was given and we showed the strains of the constraints of the, the strains on the economy for everybody, the, the college too is included in those added costs of all things going up, costs of operating and so forth. Who could have foreseen, last night, my, 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 my 15-year-old son was asking me, why is the economy so bad, Dad? Why is it so bad right now? We were talking about inflation, we were talking about these kinds of things. I said, look, who could have foreseen what COVID did to the economy? That's what we're still reeling from. It is not separate, what, what is going on today with interest rates and everything else is not separate and a part of this, this catastrophic, this calamity that was the, the pandemic, and so we're still paying for that. When the costs include, increase at the college, you must maintain that because as we've seen before, if you do not maintain a steady, a steady increase, and I'm, I'm hesitant to even say modest increase, but a steady modest increase in student charges, at some point, it's gonna come back. The three legs of the stool is what I started out with. That is a model that is, that is something that we're all built upon. There is an expectation that the students will have an investment in their part and we get that. We're trying to help more than 70% of those students. Mary in the foundation, Matthew in the foundation, we've been, we've been giving more scholarships than ever before historically. When you think a million, five, million, 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 five, I mean, over the past several years, many, many more millions of dollars have been, have been, have brought to students. We're doing better than we ever have. Are we done? Never done. I think I need to stop there so we can get through this.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I have some comments. I mean, I, I had, I had asked Mark for this Pell Grant slide because, I mean, I, I think I'm the youngest of us and I am still learning about how college finance works now versus how it worked 20 years ago, and it's changed a lot and there's a lot more resources or options available to people. I mean, I, I, I think, I think $3 is reasonable because I, I went back and looked at the CAFR and 10 years ago, the property tax contribution to our overall budget was half of what it is now. Student contribution, student tuition and fee contribution after financial aid was higher 10 years ago in aggregate than it is now. And enrollment is lower than it was 10 years ago. And so, I mean, I, my sense on it is this is a, it is a three-legged stool and it's also a three-legged partnership. And I think, you know, our, our property tax revenue skyrocketed last year, not because we increased the tax rate, because valuations went up. And I think next month, we're probably gonna get a report that's talking about how, how many lawsuits there are between the appraisal district and property tax owners who are fighting their appraisals. And I mean, so I, I think we need a tuition increase just to show the property taxpayers that they're not the only checkbook in this. You know, on, on the 30% who aren't on financial aid, I would, I would love more information on who those people are. I know I'm occasionally one of them. I have a program at work where if one of my employees wants to take class over here, I pay for it. Doesn't have to be in a degree program, doesn't have anything to do with work. So I mean, a $3 change in semester hour rate is not going to affect me offering that to my employees. And as, as to what it pays for, I mean, there was a inflation increase for staff that I guess we're gonna get to that slide. So this basically, this rate increase would pay for less than 20% of the inflation relief that, for staff last year. And the reason why you guys had to do the million-dollar grant rather than a full CPI increase is because you could not afford a full CPI increase to keep up with inflation for the staff. And, and so kind of my, my final point is, they are paying for a quality education and it's important that we make sure that we preserve quality and the way we preserve quality is to be able to pay the people who deliver that education what they are worth.
And those, and the million dollars came out of HERF dollars, federal, federal designated dollars, so those, that was, just, just gotta qualify that.
Mark, I want to be clear, I do not have a problem and voted for providing relief for our employees. That's not the point. The point was that our students may need some relief as well.
Absolutely. Do we know it? Do we know it?
I have a question, a couple of comments related to this out-of-pocket slide. I think it's, it's a good illustration, but it is only one frame based on the assumptions you've made on the slide, that these are full-time, first-time students and that they're living with family. And I assume you mean that they are a single mother with children or that they're somehow responsible for family. It's not that they are sharing expenses, that, that, but that they are living with some sort of family unit that they are helping provide for.
So yes, let me touch on that a little bit. Couple of good points there. You know, this is an average, you're right, and so the, the, the independent variable would be level of income. And so it's not, it's not going up to, to the Oprah show and saying, hey, you're getting $10,000 and you're getting $10,000. No, no, no. It's more like, how much do you make? How many kids? What's your household? What are your overall finances? And then will the, the financial aid gets adjusted accordingly. That's the guidelines of the federal government, right? The other piece is, you're right, the room and board piece is just an assumption that, that the student, for the very first time, is now going to college and now for the first time as well, they have a room and board expense. But the fact of the matter is, there's a good number of students that are still living with their parents, so it's not really a $6,950 expense for them. It's just saying the federal government say, by the way, this is how we justify this level of refund. And yes, they can, they can, they can go, go ahead and rent another apartment if they want, or they can spend it at their freewell. The federal government would say, spend it for ancillary educational costs. So essentially, that's $6,950 can go back to, to, into their savings account.
So the Pell, the Pell Grant can be used for, there's education-related, which is
Yes, ma'am.
tuition fees, books, supplies that are designated. It can be spent for room and board. It gets taxed if it's, if you spend it for room and board. So a Pell recipient gets taxed for anything that they spend over and above tuition fees and books and supplies. So they're just FYI. Part of that other expense is federal income tax, but that, that number is improving, is increasing this year.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the part of the state grant is our Texas Educational Opportunity Grant, which is part of the $650 million that Ms. McQueen talked about earlier, is in the state budget for the biennium, includes raising the level of eligibility. Right now, we fund 29% of students who are eligible for TEOG at the state level and the, the funding that is in place now is requested, would raise that to funding 70% of the students who are eligible. So my question is, is someone who qualifies for Pell automatically qualified for TEOG or is that a separate threshold? And so would, would there be more students with more financial aid available because of the potential dollars available in TEOG?
That's gonna be a new twist because of the, Patricia, can you help us with that one? Do you, do you have?
Put her on the spot.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's a very, it's a very, it's a scenario that has yet to play out.
I don't know if it's an automatic, if you get Pell, you automatically get TEOG or is there some other threshold?
Well, you know, this past, last year, we almost gave out nearly $14 million in Pell. And, and TPO, TPG, we gave almost $800,000.
That's separate than TEOG, yeah?
TE, yeah, that's separate from TEOG. So, and we also give the supplemental educational grant and, but
SEOG.
There's a, SEOG, there's a, there's a qualifier to, to getting that.
Okay.
So that was almost like at $250 million this past year on...
So Patricia, the, the question is, of, of those 30%, do, would those students...
Would any more of those students become eligible for state financial aid where they might not be eligible for Pell today? We don't know?
Theoretically, yes.
Theoretically, yes.
It just depends on their behaviors, it depends on...
Well, you know, there's, there's a, there's a lot of variables in that 30%. You have some students who academically don't qualify for Pell because they may be underperforming, they may be at less than 2.0 GPA, or we also have a few of the other scenario where they're already at UMAX, where we've already given them, they, they've already exhausted their Pell, whether they were here or at other institutions and came back. So there's a variety of scenarios.
So if you were to take the 30% out, we, we, I'm seeing an analysis of the 30% because I've heard it several times and it makes sense as we move ahead to better understand it, but it's an accumulation over time of various groups doing various, having various behaviors that really put them there from, I don't want to, I don't want anything to do with the federal government, I don't want anything to do with federal aid or anything like that, to, I've already maxed it out, to...
I don't qualify for need-based, I don't qualify for need-based...
Qualify, yeah, there's a lot, a lot of students come here whose parents make enough that, but, but at the same time, and so forth. And so they're, they're on that cash basis and, and so forth. So the complexity of that needs to be further delved into, but for today, suffice it to say that there is a grouping of that 30% that are in there for various and so many reasons that, that has historically, that has historically, have historically been the case here at the college. I would also say that the 70% here is probably close to average across the state, Patricia, that 70% is, we're not, we're not unusual, because that's usually another question that is asked.
My, my point in this is that when, when we use these kinds of average figures, it's very dangerous because they're really, it, there is, there are so many different frames by which we have to look at who our students are and what they need at any given point in time. So 70% of our students qualify for, for financial aid or receive financial aid, 78% of our students are part-time. Majority of our students, our average student is a female with two kids and is, is older than the age of 25. And so there's all these different ways in which we, and, and most of those that are, because they're going to school part-time, it means they're working, so we're not the only source of their income, grants are not the only source of their potential income to cover these out-of-pocket costs. And so I just, I, I want us to be careful not to make assumptions based on one frame of an average student or these costs. It scares me when we do.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you for that. You know, I'm always fearful of putting this information out there because it could discourage students for applying for financial aid because, guess what? I have 10,000 students and that means I have 10,000 different financial scenarios that are out there and so everything is so unique to them. This is an average. I can tell you, a student can receive up to 15, $20,000 in financial aid refund. So for those students who are listening to this, I encourage you, please visit our office of financial aid immediately because there are lots of dollars out there. You just gotta go over there and I can tell you, the service is great. We have friendly people working there and they're willing to go the extra mile to get you the financial aid that you need. And any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right. So, okay, so the key takeaways from this slide is that a steady and modest tuition fee increase makes financial planning more predictable and easier to manage for our for our student and our parent. Also, from the lens view of the newly incoming freshman students, this strategy minimizes, minimizes the risk of shifting the tuition and fee increase to future incoming freshmen. The example on this slide being the 2017 and 2018 terms whereby the newly incoming freshman experienced an elevated increase in the tuition rate of $5 and $11 respectively. This is attributed in part to the preceding tuition rate increases ranging from $0 to $1 in 2014, 2015, and 2016. The result of shifting the fees to future incoming freshmen includes elevated tuition rate increases that could result in student price shocks, which could potentially lead to a downward student enrollment trend. One last point. Our reality today is that inflation is inevitable, based on the Federal Reserve policy of targeting a long-range average inflation rate of around 2%. With that said, inflation rate creates a loss of purchasing power of the colleges' purchasing power for the college, resulting in downward pressures in funding mission-critical activities such as academic advising, financial aid, counseling, math, and English labs, and academic support. Are there any questions on this slide? Okay. All right. So here we go. So, uh, this slide includes three tuition rate increase scenarios ranging from $1 to $3, and it's from the lens view of a part-time student that is registered for eight credit hours in the fall and eight credit hours in the spring. When looking at the $3 rate increase, our student will experience an annual tuition rate increase of $48. On an annual basis, it'll be $48, which is an increase of 2.6%. When we factor in the expected maximum Pell award increase for the incoming year at a rate of 7.6%, our student on the average can expect an increase in their financial aid refund of, of 3%, uh, I'm sorry, an increase of 5% on a $3 tuition rate increase. That means they get to take net 5% more as a student financial aid refund on seven students for seven out of our eight students enrolled at Delmar. The 5% increase is determined by subtracting the 2.6 rate and increase in the tuition from the 7.6 in the maximum Pell award. From the lens view of the college operations, a $3 increase will provide the college with $405,000 to fund mission-critical activities that are listed right below these tables, and it will help minimize the loss of the purchasing power caused by the current elevated inflation rate, which I think I heard it was somewhere on, around the ballpark of 6.6% as recently reported. These new dollars will help fund mission-critical activities including employee compensation and deferred maintenance that will be discussed in short order on the next two final slides. Are there any questions on this? I think we covered this, uh,
Okay.
in detail, right?
Yes, Mr. Garcia, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How does that differ from in-state tuition and out-of-state tuition? Is that the same? I mean,
So, the focus of discussion is in the in-district. We do have different rate structure for out-of-district and out-of-state. And when we look at our out-of-district, we add about another $50 to the in-district. So in this particular case, if you take the $74 and you add $50, it's $124 for the out-of-district rate. Yes?
$121 for out-of-district?
Yes.
Per, per.
Okay.
That we have today. But if we go with the $3, you add $50, that'll bring us up to $124.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, so a student that's part-time, it's costing them $1,900, correct?
$1,900, $1,930.
So their Pell grant won't even cover tuition, correct?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
So their, so I'm just going back to what we were just talking about, the Pell grant. So the Pell grants and all the grants comes to $10,538. So it's not even going to help cover their expenses, is that correct? Or am I looking at this wrong? Cause?
So, so the annual increase is $1,930. That would be the new annualized cost of attendance for the tuition and fee structure. The scenario that we talked about, talked about $3,332. The difference is, on this scenario, we were talking about full-time student. In this scenario, we're talking about part-time students, which at Delmar represents about 80% of our student enrollment today.
The, the
Patricia, please introduce yourself and your title for our new regents.
Hi, I'm Patricia Dominguez. I am the Vice President for Student Affairs. And so for a part-time student, on the average, that's, let's just say, enrolled in eight hours, they're, they're, if they qualify for Pell, it will cover their tuition and fees. It will. And we have other, and they typically, when we award for the Pell, we also throw in other grants, like the T P E G, and if they want work-study, if they qualify, you know, there's, there's a variety of other grants we can access.
Why?
Sure.
Jan Turner, can you put the mic closer? It's hard to hear you.
Sorry. I was just, you know, I was just comparing to the last slides and to this one, and it just didn't quite add up.
Well,
Thank you. I just can't hear.
The previous slide was not generated by Delmar, it was generated by the National Center for Educational Statistics.
That is correct. Based on the data that we submit to them and report to them. Yes, sir.
And this is for full-time, and then your next, just so you're not looking really at apples to apples.
That is correct.
Bottom line is, a part-time student would have a $48 increase. A full-time student at 15 hours would have, uh, 15 times.
$100 increase.
$96?
$96 roughly.
So, so you're right. There, the, the, the two examples that I have for you, the first one is full-time, this one's part-time. If we're trying to gauge what the financial aid impact will be, I would say, I would have to rerun this scenario to factor in the Pell, state, and other governmental awards to determine what the refund is. I think what Patricia's saying, on the average, our part-time students, this $1,930 financial aid will cover 100% of that, and I'm pretty certain, with certain, that they will receive a financial aid refund to cover the ancillary cost that we talked about in the previous slide. Maybe not to that level, but yes.
You had said anticipating a 5% increase in what the student would receive in financial aid, or I guess the 70% of our students?
Uh, no, it was 7.6%.
7.6.
Right? And so when we take into consideration the 7.6 minus the 2.6 increase, then their financial aid refund is going to go up by the difference, which is the 5%.
You know, you're, you're anticipating that they'll have more money in their pocket?
Uh, I'm pretty sure, yes, sir. With a 7.6 increase in the maximum Pell award, if that's going up by $500 on a, a full-time student, and let's just say a full-time student here would be closer to, I'm guessing, $96, the difference of $422 is going back to the student's pocket. Yes, sir.
Now, that, that increase in Pell, is that dependent on, is that for institutions that are raising their tuition, or is that for
No.
every institution?
I'm sorry, was your question?
Every institution, you don't, you don't have to raise your tuition to get the increase in Pell. The increase in Pell is happening regardless.
Yeah, it automatically happens. Yeah. The $500 maximum Pell award is going to happen. It doesn't, uh, if, if you are a, in the scenario that, that I talked to you about here, in this scenario, student enrolled full-time, it's going to go up $500.
Regardless of what we do with tuition.
Regardless of what we do with tuition. Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay. Any other? Mr. Cool, did I answer your question?
Yeah, I just, for my colleagues on the regents who served as city councilmen, and me being a staff member, who I, I kind of equate this to increasing utility rates. So, uh, you know, you can defer it so long, but you're, at the same time, you're deferring other thing. And as the slide that you showed, where you went two years without a, an increase, and then all of a sudden you popped everybody with a, a $5 increase, that's kind of painful also. So
Yes.
Better off to, uh, maybe do it a little bit at a time. And that way, like you said, you're not deferring this off to future students to have to pay for, you know, because if you defer it, then the students that are coming in in 2025 or 2026, or however long you defer it to, are all of a sudden having to pay for the students that have already graduated, in essence.
Not following your logic. If for three years, we increase the tuition by $3, that student that comes in three years from now
No, no.
is paying $9 more.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, is if, if in this slide here, when in 2015, 2016, they didn't do a tuition rate increase, and then all of a sudden in 2017, they popped it with $5. Well, the students that were here in 2015 and 16 got the benefit of all of Delmar's educational facilities and so on. But then the new student in 2017, all of a sudden is paying for the, the past work. It's better to do your increases in rates incrementally than doing it every five years or every three years, whatever.
Well, I'm seeing if you, if we had increased our tuition $3 a year, 15, 16, maybe we could have done $3 in 17. And then we do $3 in 18 there. The student that's starting in 2018 is still paying 12% or $12 more than the student in 2014. Um, yeah, so maybe they're saving a few dollars.
Well, and regents, let, let me just add that, that the economy in 14, 15, 16 as compared to 2022, 23 is
Right.
a very, very different scenario.
Yeah.
It's just a, a downward pressure is the term that, that is used that is unprecedented, and we're still in it for 12 to 18 months. It's still, it seems like. That being said, you know, the efforts that are going on at the legislature to change things with an infusion of, of an investment from the state that is, again, historic is still not done. You know, again, I talked about this being addressed today, because as soon as April, we have to start registering, and we do not have a guarantee that things will change, excuse me, that, that the commission's work will be approved. We have to operate today, and we're bringing this to you for your consideration, based on what we know today and with no guarantees of the future.
All very good points, good discussions. I think we're bridging the, the concepts here. We're getting closer. So thank you very much for, for this robust conversation. Let's continue on to the employee compensation history, please. And we're almost done. Hang in there, please. This slide includes, um, I'm sorry. The college's most valuable resources are our employees, who are essential to our instruction. Academic support services and student support services includes academic counseling, math and English labs, financial aid, counseling, and childcare, to name a few. The financial resource for employee compensation accounts for 80%, 80% of the college's operating cost. From fiscal year 2019 to 2013, the annual employee compensation scaled from 1.3 million to 3.1 million. So now let's talk about the 2023 budget year. So the, 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 the employee compensation increase in 2023, valued right there at 3.1 million, our operating budget plan included estimated increase of new revenue, new revenue, $3.8 million. That's all. How am I going to allocate 3.8 million is the question we're asking today, to a certain degree, right? How are we going to spend that 3.8? Well, if we did what we did last year, we're going to spend 80% of that new money to fund employee compensation. Where did the rest of the money go last year? It went to our insurance. 3.8, 3.1, 700,000 insurance. It's all gone, right? It's gone. Okay. So, uh, so in order to fund the 2023 mission-critical needs, the college resorted to shifting resources to those of high-priority mission-critical needs, right? So that's where we're at today. I may have 3.8 million. I still got to figure out how I'm going to fund compensation. The trend last year was 3.1, and it leaves me with 700,000. To do what is the question? I don't know, but the budget plan process is just starting. We'll know better towards the July, August timeframe. So that's where our money's going. Right? That's the start of the conversation in this budget plan year. That's where I think the money's going. I think. It's not my decision. It's a collective decision. Anyway, with that said, Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation. I, I think now before you is a action order for a change in the tuition fee structure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. Good, robust discussion. And there's, this is all a learning opportunity for all of us. And if anybody has a crystal ball that's polished and ready to go, please let me know, because I want to know what the right answer is.
Yep.
But, um, but there is, you got, okay. We haven't, we have options before us, and the staff has given us a discussion item around a $1, $2, or $3 semester rate increase.
Madam Chair, I, I'm sorry. There was one piece that we did not talk about, and that was deferred maintenance. I am so sorry.
That's all right.
Yes.
The next slide.
Yeah.
Roll thought he was done, and he is. I'm John
He's done. Hi, John.
I'm your Vice President and Chief Fiscal Facilities Officer, and I'm going to talk to you about that elephant that's in the room that we just can't see. It's your deferred maintenance. We've been undertaking a multi-year study to get our hands around it, and we're getting, starting to get some results back. We probably all know these results. We just don't talk about them. We're looking at about $150 million in deferred maintenance. That's your current backlog. That's, that's today. And it just gets worse from there. And that's looking at all of our assets at our East Campus, the Heritage Campus, the Windward Campus, and including our new building as well. You see a table on the right. These are some priority projects. Pool heaters at the aquarium, replacing air handler units, replacing dehumidifiers. So a lot of these items are critical to these buildings, that these items start to fail, and then they can't teach classes because they have not been replaced. And it's not like we go down to Home Depot or Lowe's and pick these units up. That we have projects underway where we've ordered rooftop units, and the lead time has gone from three months to six months to nine months, to when we don't, and it's the carryover from the logistics problems from COVID. I heard on the radio that it'd been solved. I'm like, it hasn't been solved yet across the country. So we've got some major problems out there. Part of the challenge is to begin kind of a separate discussion about how are we going to fund this? And it's a long-term strategy. We cannot solve it today. We cannot solve it with a little bit here and there. It's about developing a long-term strategy about what's our plan to address these deferred maintenance issues and identify funding sources for them. All right. Some high-level information here. Questions?
Do you have a total?
Um, so the need today is $150 million, with an additional $101 million coming in this next, over the next 10-year period. So the total over like the next 10 years is at $250 million.
Okay.
And that's kind of in today's dollars, that inflation
Can you send us the list?
Yes, sir. But we'll, we have a detailed information that we can send you. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So by helping with raising the, the tuition to the $3, some of this money would go into these past due projects to help with them? Or I guess I want to like to know, you know, with those increases, what are you, what are your plans on using that money for to?
Again, if we can go back, that, that slide outlined them in more general terms. They're right there. Just start that. Again, it, it goes into the, the, again, we go back to our strategic planning needs. We go back to those basics. Remember, we tied the budget. Again, we continue to tie the budget. We're, we're doing a better and better job. We're, we're doing a better and better job of outlining a strategic plan and, and assessing our priorities. Of course, when a, if a building fails or if a roof fails or windows fail, we have to just, uh, go at it from an emergency standpoint and we'll fund those kinds of things. We'll find ways to do that and we've done that over the years. But as we move ahead, we move ahead according to the priorities of the strategic plan. Students, students' experience is always job one, starting with safety and those kinds of things. And, and, and the HRF dollars has helped, has, have helped us get through that. So again, going back here, I, I, you know, is it, is it numerically, is it ordinarily, uh, placed up here for your consideration? No, it's generally, uh, these topics that tie back into our strategic planning processes. That's how, um, and that's the imperative for this group as we get ready and start preparing for the next strategic plan to establish those goals according to, um, uh, the, um, our, and to tie those goals to the budget and future budgets with consideration that have been brought before you today, such as these items here. Again, first and foremost, uh, students, all, safety for all people comes first. The student experience and, and our employees are the top priorities for, for these kinds of dollars. What these dollars do is offset and, and enable us to move ahead in a fashion that, that, uh, that allows us to have a priority list. That's the short answer, Dr. Turner. But, but the numbers, when I asked them to get the deferred maintenance and so forth and spread, and to show us what a 10-year outlook, um, it, it tells us that we, you know, buildings are living, breathing things and they continue to age, uh, like all of us, and things happen. And, um, as such, um, we've got to be prepared for it. So going backwards, the, the big point here is going backwards, as Mr. Crowell said, you know, not raising tuition, eh, that's really, really tough. Um, uh, it, it hurts the institution until that model of the three-legged stool changes and, and/or until, um, you decide strategically what our priorities are, uh, to, and if, if you change them, then we'll shift gears. But right now, based on the models that we have, based on the, 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 the resources of the future that are needed, um, you know, we, we presented these two scenarios. Madam Chair, you were about to ask me something right before this, uh, based on the one, two and three scenario?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Thought you were. Just wanted to make sure I didn't answer. I, I missed that.
I think part of the disconnect here, or not disconnect necessarily, but is that they're faced with having, starting enrollment in April and having to set a tuition rate, and we're not going to be starting talking about budgets until July?
Yes.
So, you know, normally, in our normal scenario, you talk about tuition increases along with your budget so you could see where the money is going to go, you know, specifically. But now you're, you're, you're stuck in a quandary here.
Yeah, our cycle is such that we, we don't have the luxury of looking at all of our revenue sources at the same time. And so, yes, we start here, uh, and then at some point during the legislative session or immediately following, we'll have a, an understanding of what the state appropriations are going to be. And at some point in July, we will have, uh, initial indications and then final numbers from the appraisal district about what our, uh, what, but those numbers are going to be.
Well, but then, you know, I, I would assume that you're, you're starting enrollment for the fall semester in April?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Crowell, it's a good observation. Uh, the point I want to bring out is that, uh, you know, our Vice President of Facilities just talked about a, a huge need.
Right.
There's no way I'm going to fund it with tuition. And the other thing is I want to be sensitive to affordability. So there's no way I'm going to want to say to the students, I'm going to increase your tuition by five dollars or 11 dollars because that was the whole purpose of the one slide is that we just don't want to do that because we want to have stability and allow the students to have financial, better financial management of the cost of attending those institutions.
Well, and assuming that all of the money that are going to be coming as a result of the Higher Education Coordinating Board's efforts comes through, then there may be some money during the budget process that we can funnel to some of these unmet needs without having to go back and do another tuition rate increase.
Yeah. Yes, the, the scenario is based on a current, the current model that we have. Again, there's no crystal ball, as was mentioned earlier. Uh, things will, we suspect things, if it does transpire, things will change. It won't be the answer, it will be an answer.
Right.
And the idea is to address all three legs of the stool of appropriations, student charges and taxes and, and, and adjust accordingly on each scenario. That's what the responsibility of this body is.
Any other questions?
I'm sure there'll be some more. So at this point, um, we, we do, um, so staff has given us scenarios again for semester, um, uh, credit hour rate changes at one, two and three dollars. Uh, and so it is the board's prerogative at this point to come to consensus for someone to make a motion.
I would make a motion that, uh, we adopt a two dollar per semester hour rate increase.
There's a motion on the floor to adopt a two dollar per semester hour rate increase. There's a second to that motion. Is there a discussion on that motion?
I'm going to vote no, I think it should be three.
I know we'll have one abstention. Dr. Babalay has to abstain because he's not done his financial training and so there's the, because he just joined us, so.
Exactly, yeah.
Is there other discussion on that item?
I would support it too as well.
Um, I was leaning more towards one, but I will vote for it.
Any other discussion or questions? And I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the, uh, semester rate increase at two dollars per semester credit hour, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, uh, in support. All those opposed, raise your hand. And three that are opposed. So that motion passes. We have a two dollar semester credit hour rate increase.
Thank you very much. You have a, it was a great, exciting, robust conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Thank you, Regents.
Thank you. All right. Um, next item on the agenda is, um, a discussion, possible action related to our internal audit report on purchasing and procurement. Ms. McDonald.
Yes, thank you, Chair. As part of our internal audit process for board review and acceptance today, the following information will be presented by Dan Graves and Brandon Tannos, partners with Weaver. They will present the purchasing and procurement final report for their internal audit and they will also give you a planned status for our FY23 plan. Just as a little bit of background, this particular audit was, um, some of the status and the report information was reviewed with the board audit committee in September. Um, that status and some of the report information was also provided at the October Board of Regents meeting. Today, they are bringing you the final report for that audit. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. She stole my thunder. That's exactly what I was going to say is, uh, you'll hear from Brandon here in just a second. Brandon is the partner who led the audit over, uh, purchasing, which was part of the fiscal 2022 internal audit plan. You'll hear from him as he led that and we'll wrap up the, the final reporting of that. Uh, you do, I believe, should have the final report in your packet and then I will cover the 2023, uh, internal audit plan status and anticipated schedule for the audits in this fiscal year.
Thank you, Dan. Good afternoon, Regents. Uh, it's a pleasure to present the final report for the purchasing internal audit that we have wrapped up. Uh, again, to kind of recap, the scope of that audit was a holistic, uh, evaluation of the purchasing process here at the college, both the centralized processes within procurement, also the decentralized processes that we have through each department that is involved in that purchasing process. Uh, our scope period is around 17 months where we looked at different purchasing transactions that occurred throughout that timeframe. Uh, this project was started, uh, late in the summer of '22 and we ended right before winter break. Uh, overall, the report received a satisfactory rating. We identified appropriate internal controls, uh, and processes both centrally and decentralized. We'll talk about some of the recommendations for improvement, uh, on the next few slides, but overall, it was a satisfactory rating. Uh, the scope was a full-cycle, uh, full-scope audit. And so what that includes was from the initiation of a purchase, so starting in any particular department saying they want to purchase some item, all the way through the acts and processes occurred within purchasing. That included purchase orders, uh, your competitive procurement, so going out for RFP, RFQ, things like that. Also, your informal or more utilization of inter-local or cooperative agreements, uh, although, all wrapping up to contract negotiation and approvals through actually managing our vendors and having them set up in our vendor master file. As we said, overall, as a satisfactory rating, we identified sufficient internal controls, uh, policies, processes and procedures throughout the purchasing cycle. Uh, we had three main objectives. Those objectives listed here would be, the first is an evaluation of the internal control design. We determined that there were sufficient internal controls to cover all the key process and sub-process areas. Uh, we did have, uh, two areas for improvement that we'll talk about further over that. Uh, objective B is where we actually test the effectiveness of those controls. So if, uh, we have a process that is defined, do we follow that process through every transaction that we have sampled as part of our audit procedures? And that included a satisfactory rating with one recommendation for improvement. Um, and then our final objective was looking at user access. So when you think about different systems the college uses, uh, in, you know, very similar in colleague for the ERP system, uh, for purchasing, there's different people with different rights and responsibilities. So we evaluated that to ensure, are these the appropriate roles and responsibilities for people that have access to those systems? This was strong with no recommendations for improvement. So people had the appropriate access granted to them with their roles and responsibilities here at the college. And so overall, there was three areas for improvement. Uh, each one of these was coordinated with purchasing through our validation procedures and discussed in detail. Uh, the first one is about the vendor performance monitoring. So what we've identified, working with, uh, procurement, is there's not really a formal, established and consistent and systematic process for the, for the monitoring and evaluation of vendor performance. So when we use a vendor, whether that's for, uh, any type of purchasing contract, goods, service, uh, that is managed more of a local level, so decentralized. Uh, but there's not really a consolidated centralized area where we can monitor vendors. So if, let's say, one department has a bad experience, the other departments that may want to use that vendor also understand what is the, the past history of that vendor. That helps ensure we make, uh, informed decisions when we have a procurement to select the appropriate vendors. Uh, right now, that is more managed in, in a more, uh, communicating form, not really documented. And so here is a, an opportunity to enhance that through using, uh, our own, uh, current contract management system. Uh, the second one we hear is about serial, sequential or split purchasing. And so oftentimes, um, you know, you have in, in our environment and procurement, there's a lot of criteria or things that have to happen based on state and local requirements. And so looking at serial, sequential or split is to ensure that we don't have people trying to bypass controls. So let's say you had of a competitive procurement threshold, much at the college, for let's say $50,000, to be able to purchase has to come to the board for approval. You want to make sure that somebody is monitoring those on a routine that we're not having split purchases, let's say two $25,000 purchases. So having that process. Now, there is a procedure that is done internally right now to look at that through POs and is a very ad hoc and manual process, but there's not a consistent and systematic process to allow that kind of procedure to happen on a consistent basis. And so takes out the manual nature so that we can have some type of exception reporting or things like that, um, to be able to identify those issues, uh, more timely. Um, right now with, uh, there's restrictions within the college's ERP, but as we all know, we are going to a new ERP system and these are some possibilities of looking at these types of exception reports in the future system. And the last item, uh, that we have here is really what we identified in our objective B or where we were testing the effectiveness. Um, we had some vendor file completion items that we identified where a few vendors, uh, did not have the vendor information form being completed. Now, by requirements, and so local government code and even state procurement requirements, all we have to have is the W9. Those are in compliance. We have those for every vendor in our sample that we identified. But in, the college has a procedure to have this vendor information form. Now, this is more, uh, name, address, demographic information. This helps ensure that our vendor master file is complete. Uh, we identified two instances where those vendors did not complete those. Uh, those were established vendors with renewals, a more lower risk area, and that's why this one was a lower risk finding. This has to do more with a consistency in our documentation, not so much a non-compliance of our documentation. So of those three findings, to kind of summarize, um, we have effective controls, we have policies, procedures in place. There should be enhancements to existing processes and procedures to ensure consistency and efficiency and really relying more on our future systematic operations to get out of the manual nature of some of these areas that, uh, our procurement department relies on. So we did coordinate with management also to have, uh, management responses. So for each, uh, audit, and so those new to, to definitely the board here, uh, we request management responses, which include what are they going to be the action plans for each one of these findings and also a responsible party and implementation date. So, uh, we have those here presented, they're in the report as well. For the first one, vendor performance monitoring, this is going to be a collaborative effort. Uh, performance monarch is not just a procurement responsibility. Uh, this includes risk management, also general counsel to want to establish what the vendor performance monitoring process should be and relying on procurement and their contract management system to import that into a systematic process so we can not just monitor performance, but if we do have departments that want to evaluate certain vendors, that we can look at past performance. So much like if you want to go, you know, if you have thoughts on, on a vendor or place, you may go on Yelp and say, I want to see what other people are saying. Was this a good vendor? Did we have a good experience? Did we get what we paid for? So very similar in using our contract management system to do that. Uh, for informal, serial, sequential or split, the current ERP system does not have this ability to run those type reports. So this will be, uh, a highlighted area in the new ERP system to look at type of exception reports that we can pull on a consistent basis so that management can identify any potential for serial split or sequen, uh, split purchases and so forth. And the final, um, management will clarify their guidelines on what is desirable for vendor file completion. Again, the vendor file document form that we described in the previous slide is a internal procedure. This is not a non-compliance item, uh, and it will be, make sure that they have complete packets, but also if they're unable to get those forms, that they're going to have a risk-based approach to determine if they need it. Uh, again, the W9 will always be required to be a vendor of the college and does not impact compliance and so forth. So overall, uh, I'd say a very clean audit. Um, there is effective controls and processes of what we identified to ensure procurements are done according to the requirements established by the state of Texas and local government code, um, and to ensure that our departments are met with their needs. I will pause here to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
Quick, when you talked about those exception reports, I mean, at some point you transfer, you'd be able to transfer the ability for, for staff members to run those exception reports, right?
Correct. So what we've seen in other environments is you could run an exception, have an exception report that is run on a particular time period that could go to your inbox or be run in the system. So you could see that on a frequency of your choosing. So instead of, right now, it's a very manual nature. So if you wanted to see those yourself, you have to run all those, let's say, POs, you're trying to manually line those up to see what could be a potential. And a lot of times you're looking at the department or who's the person that's requesting that item to really identify by vendor what those could be. But, you know, as we move to the future and using our new ERP to really help us be more efficient, is, those are some things that we could see be beneficial.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Question? All right. I'll bring it back to Dan to talk about the schedule of, uh, next audits.
Thanks, Brandon. So yes, we do have our 2023 fiscal internal audit plan. This was previously, uh, approved by the board. As a reminder, uh, we have three audits on the plan for this year, one over the Burser's office that is basically planned to have a potential scope of really the student accounting, cash handling, credit debit cards, uh, point-of-sale reconciliation, accounts receivable collections, really anything that would do with the, the student interaction of, uh, collecting payment for, uh, tuition fees, uh, or other payments. Uh, that is planned to begin after spring break and roll into early April. Uh, we also have an audit on the plan for payroll. Uh, this would be, uh, is just what it sounds like, a, an audit over the payroll process. Payroll is one of the key areas, um, you know, as you, you've seen in the finance discussions, that's one of the biggest expenditures of a, uh, educational institution. And so this one's really critical that we get this right. Uh, that's why it was also rated as high risk on our, our risk assessment. And so, uh, we will be performing an internal audit over the payroll process that, uh, and report that back to you. We also have safety and security. Uh, sorry, the payroll timing will roll right after the Burser's office finishes, will roll right into the payroll, uh, audit. And then safety and security, uh, this audit- And then safety and security, this audit is still, it's on the plan, it's TBD because of some of the interactions and development of the police department. We have that on the schedule, and we do have some some scope areas there that we will plan to cover. But the timing of that yet is TBD as well as some of our follow-ups. So the second section of our audit plan has follow-ups over the open findings. So you just heard from Brandon about the the purchasing ones, those three, we will follow up on those in July, as well as from last year, the 2022 plan on construction management. We are planning those coming up again this spring and May as well. Information security, we did have that on last year's plan, there were a few findings there. We have that listed as TBD because we are holding some checkpoint meetings with information security and the ISO so that we can make sure we plan those procedures out and time them well so that the activities and remediation efforts that need to to be put in place have time to do that. So we are still coordinating that and having periodic check-in meetings so that we can just stay apprised of those developments and where remediation has evolved. So the rest of our plan is our quarterly updates, an update of our annual risk assessment so that we can help develop a 2024 fiscal year internal audit plan that will be presented later this year, and then our annual report that you've seen before, or most of you have seen before, I realize, some new board members, but we'll have our annual report as well. So I'll open for any questions on just where we're at with progress on the fiscal 23 audit plan.
As you have come to know, there's almost always a new board member or two around here. So we were, you are now in your sixth year? How long have y'all been with us? Seventh year?
Yes, because we've we've gone through one renewal cycle already.
Right, right. So for those new board members, they have been with us for a while and give regular updates and some in closed session, most in open session, and so they're they're our right hand, and they report directly to us through the through the college president and through Tammy's office. So any questions or comments? We do need to take an action to accept the internal audit report for purchasing and procurement as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Adami, any discussion on that motion? Is there any public comment on that motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is related to our representation on the various TERS boards, the tax increment reinvestment zones that we participate in with the city of Corpus Christi and Nuasus County. There are four active TERS, two, three, four, and five. And as presented to you, I am appointing Libby Abert to TERS two, which is the Padre Island Peckery Channel TERS, Rudy Garza for TERS three, which is the downtown TERS, and David Loeb has agreed to take on two of them, both the North Beach and the SPID crosstown TERS, TERS four and five. And so with your approval, those appointments have been made and all individuals have accepted those appointments. As a as a matter of practice, we, the city Corpus Christi communicates directly with the Delmar College representative. We, I have always passed on my agendas and any supporting documentation to Dr. Eskamia and Lenora so that they can keep a file on it. And if you cannot attend a meeting and want someone, you can't have somebody participate by proxy, but if you would like a staff member to attend because you have to miss a meeting, then let Lenora or Dr. Eskamia know, and they'll have an appropriate staff person participate. We probably do need to come up with some sort of reporting opportunity on a regular basis, but we can discuss that at a future point in time.
Well, just as a point of information, I think the TERS number five may be in question because I think some of that, the property that was within the boundaries of that TERS has changed ownership.
Yeah, my understanding is that the TERS number five, the developer agreement was terminated, but that the TERS is still in existence because they're determining whether or not there might be another opportunity to use that mechanism.
Well, I saw preliminary plat for a portion of that property, and it in no way reflected the original concept of the TERS.
If you were concerned about what our money is used for, I plan to review what we originally signed up for in the context of what I vote for.
Look forward to future reports.
I'll be glad to assist you.
Is there a motion to accept the appointments as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Krul. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelly. Any discussion on that? Any public comment on that motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Ms. Dr. Turner was absent for that vote. Next item is regarding an award for competitive seal proposals for some renovations and improvements on our Heritage Park, Heritage Park, our Heritage Campus. That's right.
Everyone, did everyone get a copy of the summary sheet? This is agenda item number 10, discussion and possible action award of contract for request for competitive seal proposals, RCSP number 202302, Delmar College building renovations and improvements, the Heritage Campus. This is a competitive seal proposal, qualifications-based. You have the evaluation criteria, the relevant experience and capability, 15 points, post-subcontractors five points, quality assurance and warranty and follow-up, 15 points, past performance of related work, 15 points, past schedule record, five points, other capabilities and considerations, five points, price, 40 points for total of 100 points. We have an evaluation committee that was made up of physical facility staff as well as some of the key users. On your back page, you have the bid tabulation and overall scoring. The number one scoring, and this is on the base bid, Spa Glass Contractors with a bid price of $12,639,667, and the valuation score 77.68 points. Number two is Victory Building Team, number three BB Craft Company Incorporated, number four Fulton Construction. That base bid proposal includes $250,000 for owner contingencies. There are no ad alternates being recommended, and this project is scheduled to be complete in 540 calendar days after notice to proceed. This is a 2014 bond-funded project. The building is vacant, and all as best as payment has been completed, ready for the construction. Recommending award of contract to Spa Glass Constructors Incorporated in the amount of $12,639,667 using 2014 bond funds.
Are there any questions for Mr. Strabos? Any comments?
Have to ask, so we are not picking the low bidder. What was it about Spa Glass that made them more attractive than the low bidder?
The quality of their proposal, that you have the overall scoring criteria, and you don't have a detailed breakdown. We don't usually provide that.
Or you could just tell us.
They have a better story to tell, and all of these vendors have all worked for us in the past, were familiar with all of their work, and but Spa Glass put together a proposal that was better than the other proposals.
I think I'm interpreting that to mean you think we're going to end up with better buildings based on their proposals.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Loeb?
I would just say, you know, we had a bid criteria how we did, so this isn't specific to this, but I, that question is because we don't have a two-step process of qualifying people and then taking low bid amongst qualified. And I think, I know we're going to look at, we're in the process of looking at our bid procedure, and I think that that is overall a better system of finding out who is qualified to do the work, you know, scoring them on that, and then secondarily, okay, of those people who are qualified, picking low bid.
Yes, so that is another alternative for construction, which you pre-qualify bidders. Depending on the project, scope, there's a variety of other factors for that. It's similar to how we select architects and engineers, qualifications only, prices separate. So yes, that is another procurement method that we could use.
I'm not talking about price, I'm not talking about doing it like architects or engineers. I mean, I'm saying, you know, who is qualified and then low bid amongst who is qualified, which I don't think we can do among architects and engineers.
No, you cannot do low bid.
You can't.
That's for you.
Well, okay.
Again, not related to this, but I'm wondering if we could have a workshop session on our processes because we've, we haven't looked at those in several years, and that would give an opportunity for all of us to be on the same page about processes and then potentially look at any potential changes or refinements we want to make to that process.
Just just out of curiosity, was this advertised generally, or was it just advertised to a certain group of?
We advertise in accordance with the law, so it's two Sundays in the caller times, but we also post it on our website, and there's a lot of contractors who've been tracking this project, and we got the word out as much as we could, and we actually use a database to notify other contractors across the state.
There's there are several bid rooms out there now, the one I'm familiar with, Civcast.
Yes, sir. Yes, and we had bid rooms calling up, calling us. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions related to bid? We do need a motion to accept the staff recommendation to award the contract to Spa Glass Contractors, Spa Glass Contractors in the amount of $12.6 million using the 2014 bond funds. Motion by Dr. Adami, is there a second? Second by Dr. Turner. Any other discussion on that motion? Is there any public comment on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Next will be a discussion and possible action related to the award of contract for competitive seal proposal for Windward Campus Emergency Response Training Facility.
This is agenda item number 11. Discussion and possible action on award of contract for request for competitive seal proposals, RCSP 202303, Windward Campus Emergency Response Training Facility Improvements. So you have the summary page, it's similar but different. So in this particular case, the evaluation criteria is exactly the same, and so we also have an evaluation committee that's made up of staff and of the key end-users and the engineer of record for the project. On the second backside, you see the bid tabs. We had two bidders, Marshall Company Limited and Victory Building Team. The base bid price for Marshall Company, $1,543,725.49, their valuation score 80.67 points. They're the number one ranked. Victory Building Team is number two with a bid of $1,639,073 and a score of 79.05. The base bid proposal includes $227,043.63 for owner contingencies. No ad alternates are recommended for this to be accepted. The project is scheduled to be complete 210 calendar days after notice to proceed. This is a key part of our training. It has confined space training and collapsed trench training. Then on December 6, 2022, the city of Corpus Christi passed a resolution authorizing a 10-year interlocal agreement with automatic renewal every year thereafter for a term of one year each renewal with Delmar College to provide fire, emergency, medical services, and other public safety-related training for joint use for these facilities. We're recommending award to the number one ranked bidder, which is the low bidder, which is Marshall Company Limited, in the amount of $1,543,725.49. The funding for this is partly from internal funding, $647,000, and the balance coming from the 2014 bond funds.
Does the city pay anything as part of that interlocal agreement?
Yes, sir, they do. Now, that's for the regular fire and paramedic training. This will also lend itself directly to industrial training, and we have industrial partners waiting right now to get this facility built, and we'll be able to charge them at a corporate rate.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So it's basically a revenue generator.
Yes, sir, it should pay back pretty quickly.
Thank you.
What is the internal source of the $647,000?
That was basically last year's budget carryover. It was budgeted last year, and we were able to put those funds in the reserve account and carry them forward.
Budgeted for this project or?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion to award the contract to Marshall Company in the amount of $1.54 million as submitted?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Krul. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Turner. Any comments or any other questions on this item? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, discussion and possible action related to 2016 Bond Osso Creek Campus Construction Project Change Order number 13.
The campus is getting closer, the lake is filled with the water that's supposed to be there, you've got sidewalks being poured, we've got classes in every single one of the buildings. We're close to having everything 100% ready. The president may talk to you about calendaring for a ribbon-cutting ceremony coming up soon. This particular agenda item has two change orders that when the project was bid, there were two separate projects. One was for the central plant, and then one, the other one was for the rest of campus. In this case, the change order for the central plant, the $52,187, and then the change order for the rest of campus, the main STEM culinary arts, $216,112.39. You do have a detailed list of the specific items in these different change orders, it's on the last page of that item. And so you have a detailed list of those items for the central plant as well as for the rest of the campus. And these are items to get the campus the way the end-users really need it, as well as to address certain items that have been identified by the architects, the engineers, and by city staff about code compliance issues. And this is funded with the 2016 bond funds.
On the cabling for cameras in the parking lot, is that, are they running data lines to them on the poles or?
Well, they're not going to be aerial, they're not going to be cables running through the air, so we have to run conduit to get the cables to the poles.
Why are they not using Wi-Fi?
We are using Wi-Fi, but due to the limits of the strength of the Wi-Fi, we've got to run some cables for some of it.
Okay, all right. So the Wi-Fi for the, the campus Wi-Fi system does not penetrate out into the parking lot that far?
Not not for that, not and not for the bandwidth that's needed for the number of cameras and the data that's generated by the cameras.
All right, okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve change order number 13 on for the Osso Creek Campus as well as change order number five for the central plant?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Babaly? Is there a second? I'm sorry, by Mr. Garza, I'm sorry. I heard that direction. Second by Dr. Adami. Any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Strabos.
Thank you.
Last on our agenda today, and you know what that means, Mr. Rivera, actually, it's not last because we have a closed session after that. Mr. Rivera is going to give us our annual board ethics update.
Anybody want to stand up or not take a break, but if you want to stand up and get some circulation going, we're about to shift gears here from high finance and numbers to something a little different. So anyway. Regents, thank you for the opportunity to walk you through your ethics review this afternoon. I will try to get through it. You're going to see that my presentation may appear to be dense for a PowerPoint, but that's because I'm going to print it out or email it to you, and you'll have it as a resource that you can go back to. So I'll just try to hit the high spots. We're going to start with a little bit of historical background because, again, I recognize, and for those of you who have seen this before, understand that at least three of you have never seen this before, and so in, you know, out of respect for them, I want to make sure that we cover some basic ground. So we'll start with a little bit of historical background. We'll, we'll go through a couple of reminders as to why looking at ethics when it's not a big fire is important. We'll look at a few authoritative sources for ethics best practices, and then we'll do a walkthrough of the statement of ethics that you have in your bylaws. do a walkthrough of the statement of ethics that you have in your bylaws before wrapping up with a case update. So that's the agenda. But first, I always like to start out with this quote, one of my political heroes, Barbara Jordan, who put it simply, as far as ethics goes, "It's not complicated or difficult, it's about values." And you're going to see that as a familiar pattern or common perspective on ethics. It's about values, it's about right and wrong behavior, it's about the common good, the good we all hold in common. Ethical behavior means being honest, telling the truth, and doing what you said you would do. By the way, I've got the site for this down there. It's actually on the website for the Office of General Counsel, the Attorneys for the University of Texas System. So even lawyers look at things like this every now and then. Summarize this, this board's commitment to ethics really began a little more than 10 years ago, when an ad hoc committee of your predecessors all came together and reviewed the bylaws, in particular, the statement of ethics that's included in there, and proposed certain changes that were adopted, but most importantly, they adopted the practice, they proposed, and it was accepted by the board, the practice of doing an annual ethics review and then signing, physically signing, a code of ethics pledge that was a commitment to follow the board bylaws and the statement of conduct and ethics for the next year. Also, since 2015 at least, a number of us, including your chair, Dr. Adami, Dr. Eskamia, and myself, have spoken at national conferences, at ACCT, at AACC, before the coordinating board, before the TACA group, which is the Community College Attorneys Group that I belong to. We've spoken on board governance and on ethics, so we just don't talk about it here. In 2021, just a couple of years ago, an ad hoc committee again reviewed the board bylaws and statement of conduct and ethics and proposed changes and updates that were adopted. On that particular committee, we had Regent Libby Averitt, she was the chair, and Regent Susan Hutchison and Lori Turner were on that. You all will recall, for those of you who were around, that it was quite a bit of work that the committee ended up committed to doing. It was extensive, and it was truly a deep dive. And so the bylaws that you have in front of you today that are applicable to the work you do and the statement of ethics are all relatively, you know, recently reviewed and updated, so that's good. Why are ethics important? Dr. George Boggs, some of you know Dr. Boggs, I know Dr. Eskamia does, he's sort of a scholar and a statesman in the community college arena. He used to be the CEO of the American Association of Community Colleges, and I always like to bring this up, because even Dr. Boggs asks the question, "Community colleges, for all the good that they do for individuals, exhibit the same type of lapses in ethics that we find throughout society. Why do these lapses continue to occur, and what can be done to strengthen the ethical foundations of our institutions?" He answers his own question as follows, "That restoring public confidence can only happen if we begin to make ethical behavior a significant value." There you go with the values again, making it part of your culture. It's important to seriously think about ethical values before one is faced with difficult and ambiguous dilemmas that are all too common. When did Moses build the ark? Before the rain, before the rain. So this is what you do on an annual basis, and, you know, at four o'clock after a very long day, you might be thinking, why are you committed to doing this on an annual basis? But it's important. Like I said, you don't have the ethical fire going around you, and you're paying attention to it and committing time to it, and that's important. It's especially important that you're doing it here in a public meeting, in front of staff and the rest of the college. Ethic statements do not guarantee ethical behavior, but they do serve to remind leaders that ethical considerations should guide their behavior. Another reason ethics are important is, these are all, this is kind of a laundry list of real headlines. I've modified it, you don't see any names in there to protect the guilty, but these are real headlines that if you go and Google them, you'll see that community college boards, community college trustees have gotten into trouble, and it's been out in the public. These are real, like I said, headlines, more real headlines. I have the one at the bottom. The last two are, the last three, "Community College District Trustee Sentenced to 12 Years in Public Corruption Case. That strayed far from the ethical and became actually quite criminal. Judge has to remind community college that board trustees are representatives of the public." And this, I mean, just to show you that it's recent, and these aren't ancient history, "Community College Trustees Sought College Funding For Her Nonprofit," records show. That's just from a few days ago. So I'm always, every now and then, looking at what I can add or supplement this list with. What's the end result of things like that when they come on? You all know this, you know, you all are experienced public officials, you know, from time on other boards or councils. The drama's played in a public view, that's not good for anybody. There's a damage to the functionality and credibility of the board, diversion of college time, resources, and attention, damage to the reputation of the college. In 2014, a Deloitte survey found that the most prevalent drivers of reputation risk in order of significance, number one, risks related to ethics and integrity. That's above physical and cybersecurity and products and services, ethics and integrity. I leave you with a quote from Benjamin Franklin, "It takes many good deeds to build a good reputation, and only one bad one to lose it." ACCT, the Association of Community College Trustees, for those of you that are new to the board, you'll find out soon enough, I mean, you heard a little bit about ACCT in the National Legislative Summit from the report given by Regents Scott and Turner earlier, but they have guides, I mean, they put out informational guides for governance, and this is what they say, that basically government boards function best when the standards for trustee behavior are clear. They recommend the adoption of a set of standard, a code of ethics, and they point out that some regional community college accrediting commissions already require that boards have code of ethics. Well, you've already heard about SACs COC, the accrediting body for Delmar College, and they do require every degree granting higher institution to have a code of ethics. When we went through our recent reaccreditation process, you can bet the bylaws, your board bylaws and your code of ethics were scrutinized and reviewed by SACs COC. AGB, some of you may be familiar with the Association of Governing Boards of universities and colleges. They're a little more geared to the four-year universities, but they do have a community college component, and they're nationally known as providing good training and good resource material and good contribution to the education of boards and trustees. They've got eight principles, that if you look up on their website, these are all publicly available. They've got eight principles of being an effective trustee. I'm just pointing out principle four, to conduct yourself with impeccable integrity. It supports the fundamental function of leading by example. That's another common theme. We've been talking to you about values and then also leading by example. You always act in the institution's best interests, putting it ahead of your personal preferences and political allegiances. I like what the next sentence, regardless of how you were selected as a board member, you do not represent a particular group of constituents. You're here to serve Delmar College. You preemptively disclose conflicts, actual and perceived, and dualities of interest, and you uphold the highest ethical standards. You model the values, ethics, and morals that the board expects of the administration, faculty, and students. In addition, SACs COC, in their Principles of Accreditation Handbook, they talk about the governing board, and I like what they say there, "The institution's governing board holds in trust the fundamental autonomy and ultimate well-being of the institution. As the corporate body, the board ensures both the presence of viable leadership and strong financial resources to fulfill the institutional mission." You certainly had a lot of discussion today about strong financial resources, so you're doing your job there. Integral to strong governance is the absence of undue influence from external sources. Importantly, Section 42B specifically addresses the role of the board as follows, and this kind of came up, Dr. Babaly, you heard this in connection with the interview this morning, right? This was first and foremost in Madam Chair's line of questioning, and that is, "The governing board must ensure a clear and appropriate distinction between the policymaking function of the board and the responsibility of the administration and faculty to administer and implement policy. Your job is to make policy and to oversee the administration. It's the administration's responsibility, under Dr. Eskamia's leadership, to administer and implement that policy." And that's important. Dr. Eskamia can tell you stories. I mean, I've heard them, we've seen them, there's actually a hit list. You never want to be on the hit list. But SACs COC will go around, Dr. Babaly, you may be familiar with this, and if they find you to be in noncompliance because board members or the board is unduly interfering or micromanaging, you're going to get dinged for that, and you'll go on a list. So bring that up, because I think that's one of the ethical issues that you need to be concerned with. These are, this is a list of best practices for better ethics, as I call it, that it's actually based on board experience here over time and, you know, working with the board that I present, and I include whenever I'm presenting nationally, I always tell them, look, these are, these are some tips for better ethics, and they all come out of the board experience at Delmar College, and you'll see a lot of these things are what you're doing. All right. Preamble. So preamble's an introductory statement, and you see Webster's dictionary definition, it's the introductory part of a constitution or statute that usually states the reasons for and intent of the law. According to Wikipedia, the preamble to the U.S. Constitution, beginning with the famous words, "We the people," is a brief introductory statement of the fundamental purposes and guiding principles of the Constitution. Courts have referred to it as reliable evidence of the founding fathers' intentions regarding the Constitution's meaning and what they hoped the Constitution would achieve. The reason I say that is, before this most recent review by the ad hoc committee of the bylaws, we didn't have a preamble, and now you do, and this is your preamble, and I think it's important, and I think it sets the tone for the work that you do, for the application of the bylaws, and for how you conduct yourself. You'll see, "The following bylaws of the Board of Regents of the Delmar College District provide the operational framework within which the board shall govern and act, as well as the aspirational and legal standards by which each board member shall conduct themselves in the performance of their duties and in representing Delmar College. Importantly, these bylaws include expectations of ethical behavior that are more than what is required by law. The Board of Regents acknowledges the profound importance of leading by example, and with these bylaws endeavors to cultivate a culture of exemplary ethics at Delmar College." What you're trying to do by the way you conduct yourself and by following these laws and by following these ethical rules is you're trying to exhibit to the rest of the college community that you have ethical values. This is, you've reviewed your bylaws, I'm sure, and this is just the order of them. I mean, Section 1 deals with board duties and responsibilities. You've got the statement of conduct and ethics that we're going to go over in just a second. The bylaws cover regent email and official communications, social media, posting on personal sites, conflicts of interest and prohibited benefits, regent misconduct, board elections and appointments, your training, officers, committees of the board, meetings, order of business, public comment, and rules of order. I just, again, want to just take a second to comment on the incredible work that Regents Turner and Hutchison and Averitt did. They really, I mean, they began with a review of codes of ethics and bylaws from other community colleges. They looked at the standards that I kind of blew through there in the second to look at what best practices were, and then they took the bylaws as they existed, and they tried to stay true to, you know, the outline that was already there, but they added some things. I mean, you see, we didn't have social media before, we didn't have email communications. I mean, that's all kind of an upgrade and an update, but it was a lot of detail work, and it took, you know, several months, but it's a product that you ought to be proud of. I can also share that it's been asked for already. I was at a higher education coordinating board, you know, conference last year, and an unnamed trustee from an unnamed community college in Texas asked for a copy of the bylaws, because they were going through their own changes, so. Finally, minutes of proceedings, rules of decorum, and amendment of bylaws. Okay, so let's go through the statement of conduct and ethics, which is what you actually do at this time of year every year. I'm going to go, just go through them. Again, you're going to have these, and you're familiar with them, but let me go through the meat of them. You're to attend and participate actively in board meetings, okay? In terms of attendance, there is a state law that requires you to attend at least 50% of all scheduled meetings. In other words, you can't miss more than half, you can't have more than half unexcused absences for board meetings, then you'll be subject to removal. Devote time, thought, and study to the duties of a board member. Work with other board members to establish effective board policies, delegate authority for the administration of the college to the president, and act on behalf of the board only with the official authorization of a majority of the members of the board. Just to comment about that, we are all familiar with governing boards, I know, that don't seem to have a rule about who's supposed to communicate publicly about a board matter. You know, here, the board chair is the one that's authorized to speak on behalf of the board, and that's a rule that's been respected by fellow board members, at least as long as I've been assisting with the college, and that's been now since 2005, and it's worked pretty well. But I just wanted to make that comment, because that's sometimes when things get a little crazy out in the public, because you have inconsistent messages, or you have, you know, you have the appearance that you're actually deliberating board business out in public, when what you should be doing is doing it here. You make policy decisions only after full discussion at a meeting. Base all decisions on the available facts and independent judgment, free from any undue or improper influence, and you abide by and uphold a final majority decision of the board. I'm going to repeat that, because it's going to come in when we finish up with the case update that I have for you. Abide by and uphold a final majority decision of the board. You avoid during a pending bidding, solicitation, selection, or appointment process any communications with involved vendors, contractors, bidders, or applicants outside of the board-established process. The board chair or other designated will provide information or answer questions from the public about the process. You recognize that the college adheres to the concepts of free speech and academic freedom. You encourage the free expression of opinion by all board members, and you seek systematic communications between the board and students, faculty, staff, and the community, while refraining from communicating with students, staff, faculty, and the community in any way which could be interpreted as having any authority outside the meetings of the board. That's for your own protection, as much as it is for the boards. There are ways to, you're going to get approached. We all understand that you are public officials. When you're out in the community, people with interests are going to come, want to speak to you. You're going to have to decide as you're talking to them, is this something that I can really talk to them about, or is there a concern here that I'm going to say something that's going to be misinterpreted, or that's going to be taken as speaking on behalf of the board? In that case, you either refer them to the chair or to Dr. Eskamia. Communicate to other board members and the president and CEO the college expressions of public reaction to board policies and college programs. You work with other board members and with the president in a spirit of harmony and cooperation, and in a manner that creates and sustains mutual respect. You become informed about current educational issues by individual study and through participation in programs providing needed information, such as those sponsored by state and national community college organizations. You've already heard your report earlier about the ACCT conference. There's going to be another one later this year in the fall, and that's all in your bylaws. Support the employment of those persons best qualified to serve as college faculty and staff. You insist on a regular and impartial evaluation of all faculty and staff, and you respect the authority and responsibilities of college employees and external contractors to empower them to work without interference. Remember always that the first and greatest priority must be the educational welfare of the students attending the college. Avoid real or apparent conflict of interests, and refrain from engaging in any activity that could create a conflict of interest. Refrain from using the board position for personal partisan gain. Bring about desired changes through legal and ethical procedures, upholding and enforcing all applicable statutes, regulations, and court decisions pertaining to community colleges. Work with other board members to establish effective policies and practices prohibiting all forms of unlawful discrimination, including harassment on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, including pregnancy, gender identity, and/or expression, sexual orientation, age, disability, and/or veteran or military status. Refrain from any attempt to influence any operational decision, including but not limited to individual admissions, or personnel, or purchasing decisions, except when such is a legitimate issue at a board meeting, and no board member shall have any communications about agreements or complaint with any person with a pending grievance or complaint. That happens. That has happened. It's unfortunate when it does. Be careful, again, for your own protection. Be careful if you encounter someone outside in public, and they want to start talking about a grievance or complaint. Some of this may feel like to you as common sense. You never know until you're right in the situation how you're going to react, and so just be prepared. Identify and disclose any actual or potential conflict of interest and act for the general public good, regardless of personal relationships or business interests. Refrain from suggesting or recommending subcontractors to vendors at any time. Encourage and engage in open and honest discussion in making board decisions, respect differences of opinion, and keep an open mind until each regent is at an opportunity to address the board. Refrain from accepting or soliciting any gift, favor, or service that might influence or appear to influence a regent in the performance of a or appear to influence a Regent in the performance of official duties. This is sort of the general statement. If you look at conflicts of interests under that section in your bylaws, it's even more detailed, and it gives you the specific citations to the law where the rules are set out about that. And if you have any questions, please call me. Maintain strict confidentiality of information presented, discussed, or deliberated during any closed board meeting or during any closed board committee meeting, or any information that's proprietary to the college or that's about the college, not within the public domain. As fiduciaries of the college, any Regent's disclosure or misuse of this information may be considered official misconduct or abuse of office as defined by law. That's why those terms are, in quotes, official misconduct or abuse of office as defined by law, because those are grounds for removal from office. Endeavor to avoid for a period of one year after leaving office both the possibility of conflict of interest and the appearance of such conflict that would arise if the former Regent takes employment or enters into a business relationship with any vendor, contractor, company, or other individual or entity in a business relationship with the college. Please note how this is phrased. You obviously have no authority or jurisdiction over someone once they leave the board. That's why this is, this is one of those where you're committing to subscribe to an ethical rule that's more than what the law requires. Conduct with the assistance of the college's General Counsel an annual ethics update that will specifically include a review of the board's bylaws and Statement of Conduct and Ethics. Upon completion of the annual ethics update, each Regent will prepare and file a personal disclosure statement and a commitment to ethical conduct, which I have here, which I will hand out afterwards. Demonstrate a personal commitment to ethical conduct by participating in the annual ethics update, by filing a statement of ethical conduct within 90 days of taking office, and/or annually in conjunction with the annual ethics update, and by filing a personal disclosure statement listing sources of occupational income, outside positions, and loans within 90 days of taking office, and/or annually in conjunction with the annual ethics update. Again, a note, you're not required under law to file a personal disclosure statement. That's not in the education code. That's not anything that governs you as a community college Regent. But that's something that this board decided was important enough to put into its bylaws and to make it a requirement that everybody, that everybody fulfilled. All right, so that was a very quick drive-by, the board bylaws and the Statement of Ethics. Any questions at this point? All right, the case that I was talking about, Houston Community College System, again, you veterans on the board know about this case, but it's really interesting because it's one of your, you know, colleague, community colleges up in Houston. HCC had this, David Wilson is a trustee. He was, he, yeah, he was, then he wasn't, and now he's a trustee again, if that makes any sense. Mr. Wilson was a trustee on the board of the Houston Community College System. There was a, it's detailed in the record, a very contentious history. There were lawsuits that he filed against the board accusing the board of not following its rules, of breaking the law, and eventually the board decided to censure him. Not censor, which is different. C E N S O R censor is illegal. You can't do that. But you can censure someone, which is, under parliamentary procedure, is a time-honored tool that boards or governmental bodies have used to take a vote and to express on behalf of the body displeasure or disagreement with the action of a particular member. Okay? That's what HCC, the HCC board did. They censured him for conduct not consistent with the best interest of the college, and they called it reprehensible. He said it was retaliation against him for blowing the whistle on their misconduct and that it violated his First Amendment to free speech. Very tricky. Started in federal court, U.S. District Court in Houston, that found in favor of the college, went up to the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals in New Orleans. They reversed and found in favor of the trustee and said, no, he's got a First Amendment right, and it ended up in front of the Supreme Court of the United States. As Regent Kelly knows, that's, that, I mean, you have more chances of winning at slots in Vegas than you do. I mean, really, seriously, the odds of winning in slots in Vegas are better than getting the Supreme Court to agree to accept your case. That never happens. Guess what? They accepted it. Regents, those of you that have been following the case with my updates, know that it was, it was argued November of 2021. They had oral argument after it was briefed, and the last time we had this, this update, last February, it was still pending. Well, right after that, on March 24th, 2022, the Supreme Court issued their unanimous opinion, finding that, well, the question that was presented was, does the First Amendment restrict the authority of an elected body to issue a censure resolution in response to a member's speech? The U.S. Supreme Court ruled in favor of the college in a narrow holding, and I'll explain narrow in a second, but they found that a purely verbal censure does not give rise to an actionable First Amendment claim. However, they left open the question whether there was a possible claim if the action is more severe. For example, if a Regent is removed, or if there's some attempt to curtail or keep them from being able to, you know, to conduct their, or to perform their duties. But, you know, the Supreme Court observed that elected bodies have long exercised the power to censure their members, and mere censure does not run afoul of the First Amendment. They found that it was merely responsive speech, right, by the board? That's all that it was, which was itself entitled to First Amendment protection. Mr. Wilson got off the board while the case was pending, and then right before the decision came down, he was re-elected to the board. So at these conferences, these ACCT, ACCT conferences, they actually have a legal roundtable for community college lawyers, which I, we get CLE credit for going to these things. So I go in, I missed the one in New York, but apparently Mr. Wilson showed up, and they talked about his case at the roundtable in New York at the ACC. There you go. You got it straight from the horse's mouth. So the takeaway on this is, you know, censure is, and it's in your bylaws, it's really the only thing that you can do to, to show the community that you're trying to enforce your rules when you have a rogue trustee. Fortunately, that's not going to happen. I'm not going to have to worry about that. We're not going to deal with that here, okay? But now you know the rules. You cannot remove. I mean, that question has come up before. There's no recall. You can't recall like at the city. There's no, you know, recall. That is, that's not the way it works here. You're elected officials, and therefore the only way you can be removed is if a petition for removal is filed under section 87 of the Local Government Code in the district court, and you go through all of that. I just wanted to leave you with this. I found this interesting. I'm always looking at what other places are doing. The university system in Georgia has throughout, you know, system-wide this Annual Ethics Awareness Week, and they do it in connection with an intercollegiate Ethics Bowl. So there's a collegiate ethics competition, you know? Yeah, so it's basically debate, and, you know, you get case studies, and you go, and you compete against each other. But I found these two quotes sort of pertinent and fitting to finish with. The first is from the president of the University of North Georgia, Bonita Jacobs, who's actually a Texan. In connection with Ethics Awareness Weeks, she said, "The UNG seeks to bring awareness to the importance of an ethical culture, as well as recognize and promote our institutional values. We promote service to our communities, fostering engagement throughout the region. We strive for excellence while remaining student-focused. We lead with integrity." And then the director of the internal audit for UNG said this, "It is important to promote ethical behavior positively, and if we as the UNG leadership create a culture of ethical behavior and highlight those actions, then our employees will strive to mimic it and our students to follow." Real simple math there, you know? Don't tell people what to do, show them how to do it. And with that, I thank you very much for your attention. Any questions? If you don't have any questions now, please know that I'm here to help you with questions when they come up. I'm happy to, you know, talk you through it, and all I can promise you is I think, you know, you need to go to another source, or we need to get, you know, additional help. We can do that too. But don't, no question is too silly. It's important that you ask it, and that's my number and where I'm at. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So the financial disclosure and the Statement of Ethical Conduct that we will sign, you can sign it today, you can fill it out today if you have the time to do that, or you could take it with you and bring it back to the March meeting would be appropriate as well. So whatever is most convenient for you, that is fine. Thank you very much. Are there any other, other comments or questions for Mr. Rivera as he's passing those out? Let us know if there are. We actually don't have any action that we need to take regarding this. We will go into closed session. So let me to read the closed session language real quickly. Under Texas Government Code 551.074, regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, and dismissal of a public officer or employee with possible discussion and action in open session, under Texas Government Code 551.089, regarding the security devices and audits regarding security assessments or deployments related to information, resources, technology, network, security information, or the deployment, or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel, critical infrastructure, or security devices with possible discussion and action in open session. And under Texas Government Code 551.071, regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer with possible discussion and action in open session, and the seeking of legal advice from counsel on pending legal or contemplated matters or claims with possible discussion and action in open session. The time is 4:41 PM, and we will take a very, very quick break to clear the room. All right, we are coming back from closed session at 5:06 PM. There is no, no action items coming out of closed session. Wanted to call your attention to our Board of Regents' calendar for the next couple of months. Dr. Eskamia will be representing us at the Board of Trustee Institute next week at Lakeway. He's giving a presentation about some of the work that Delmar College has done in our Pathways Program, so thank you for doing that. And then there will be a couple of us that are going to the Coastal Bend Day in Austin, representing Delmar College there. As you recall, our board day for March was moved up a week to March 7th so that the faculty and staff can enjoy spring break, December, March 13th through the 17th. And then our Delmar College Day at the Capitol is going to be on March 22nd. This is final call. If you are planning to attend, you have to let Delia know ASAP because she's going to let go of the rest of the hotel rooms, so let her know. And then in April, our board meeting date will be on April 11th, the second Tuesday of the month. At this point in time, Dr. Babaly, what we typically ask folks is to kind of plan on an all-day meeting. Often, we give you your morning back, but we, if there is a workshop or some additional time that's necessary, we sometimes start at 10:00 or 10:30 in the morning so that we don't run too late into the evening. But our regular board meeting starts at 1:00 PM on board meeting dates. April the 11th. So our regular board meeting date is the second Tuesday of the month. Delia will get those calendar notices to you so that they're all on your calendar as soon as possible. We do, it's not on the calendar in front of you, but we are planning the Oso Creek dedication on April the 21st, and then on April the 28th is our hold date for the board retreat.
It'll be all day?
Yes. Well, it might be the dinner the night before and for the better part of a day, so.
About 2:00.
Yeah. So those are the two dates that were not on the calendar. But Delia, if you'll get those Outlook invitations out to folks, even if they're a hold now and we adjust the time later, that would be real helpful for folks. All right.
Also, it's a ten minute.
Yes. You're asking me, I'm looking at them, and they say yes, I say yes. All right. With nothing else on our agenda today, we are adjourned at 5:09 PM. Happy Valentine's Day.